...member the public would like pulled. Yes, sir?
The minutes from the December fourteenth.
Item two. Very good. Is there any other item the member of the public would like pulled? Then with the exception of two and the addition of three hundred and thirty-eight claims to vendors totaling five million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and four cents as a motion to accept consent.
So moved.
Motion for acceptance made by Commissioner Amick, seconded by Vice Mayor Shum. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes five zero. Item number two is just to receive the minutes and there was a problem, sir, with solid waste task force minute, meeting minutes from a particular day.
Yeah, can I give you some documents?
Please, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks.
These minutes are, to put it simply, misleading. A small issue I have, but not a deal breaker, is the inclusion of a completion time, but the failure to include a start time. This meeting started thirty minutes late and caused me to miss another appointment. If these meeting minutes get sent back for revision, I believe that point should be included. The reason these minutes should be sent back for revision is the failure to include all of my statements in the public comment period and numerous responses by members of the SAB. The meeting minutes, as currently submitted and approved unanimously by the SAB Reed, Matt Schwabauer, that's me, a Lawrence citizen, raised concerns about the environmental impact of fracking. He wondered what the SAB thought about fracking and if it would be in the SAB's purview to advise the city commission on this practice. The SAB briefly discussed this topic and decided to postpone discussion for a future meeting. I've supplied for the commission's review a complete transcript, which I took the time to draft myself from an audio recording of the meeting. Since the entire conversation lasted seventeen minutes, I will not read it at this time. I will, however, point out a few key points which need to be included in these minutes. I opened up the discussion with a point about Mayor Cromwell's joke regarding oil consumption improving his business. Daniel Poole, Daniel Poole, the then-chair of the SAB, corroborated Mayor Cromwell's position. This is a critical omission from the meeting minutes and it needs to be on the record. I will not go into the fallacies and I will not go into the fallacies of this art of Mayor Cromwell and Daniel Poole's position at this time, for I did not bring them up at the SAB meeting, which is the current topic. After another few minutes of conversation with the SAB, I made a clear and concise request that the SAB advised the city to cease expanding natural gas and fossil fuel infrastructure. Infrastructure. This is another glaring omission in these meeting minutes. Although I respect members of this commission and members of the SAB as humans with the same basic needs as myself, does not, it does need to be noted when they're unaware of issues related to the topic on which they are to advise the commission. The meeting minutes failed to recognize that at least one member of our SAB was unaware of the city's compressed natural gas car program and another was unaware of the presence of fracking in our state. And to the most important question I posed, regarding the obligation to purchase just energy, the SAB had no proper response. This is particularly disappointing because it was actually the easiest of all the questions. And a simple yes would unleash a wave of progress in our efforts toward sustainability. Instead of this enlightened attitude, the response of the SAB was to tell me that I was asking big philosophical questions. The conversation rambled onto another question posed by me, but once again was left out of these minutes. Why does the city not have a bike-to-work incentive? There were many important statements made during this discussion, but to bring them all into light now would take even more time than I already have. I don't see how anyone on the commission can receive these minutes while they lack even the handful of details that I have pointed out. This ought to illustrate the flaws in our meeting record system. It seems simple enough to record every meeting and post an audio file online within twenty-four hours of completion. I would like that formal suggestion to be included on this record. For the public and the commissioners, I've posted the recording and transcripts of the SAB meeting online at www.e L S C H W A B E R I N O dot com. Thank you for your time.
Is there a public comment on this item? Mr. Schwabauer, since I was the, you know, the comment I made appears here quite a bit, I'd have to look back and watch that meeting to see exactly what I said. I believe it was something along the lines of as oil prices go up, people buy solar panels, which is, which is true. And whether, you know, my sense of humor didn't, didn't find an appreciative audience and you apologize for any offense that that was given, but, but I do, I do sometimes make light of things that I care deeply about and that was the case in this, in this instance. If you have a problem with the minutes of the Sustainability Advisory Board, I'm assuming that you're talking to the Sustainability Advisory Board about that specifically, you know, that you're included, but, you know, if, anyway, I think that's...
Do you want to send the minutes back to the city, if they need to be amended in some way, or do you want to, what's, you were there.
I was not. I was not at the Sustainability Advisory Board meeting for this. I, you know, one thing I'll point out about this is that the minutes from our various task forces and groups is they're not a comprehensive blow-by-blow, word-by-word description of everything that everyone says. And, you know, someone does make a determination whether, you know, what, what gets included and what doesn't get included in those minutes. Those are public meetings and are available for anyone to attend.
Kathy Richardson, Public Works Department. It's staffed, one of the staff that works with the Sustainability Advisory Board. Kathy was here. I'm, just quick comments and you, these are not your minutes, these are the minutes of the board. That's why we receive them, you're not approving them, unlike, unlike your other minutes. If you believe that they need to, if you want additional information on this, that, you can ask them to look at that, you could just have this information transmitted to that board and the board could decide what it wants to do. I don't think it's, I guess it's, my, my comment is, I don't think it's appropriate for you all to correct their minutes, it's really their, their, that board's...
That, that would be impossible since, you know, I wasn't, you know, none of us were at the meeting and, and this was, you know, again, it was, anyway, interpretation here. I think, you know, what I would recommend is, is sending comments, you know, back to the Sustainability Advisory Board that we have, we've had some concerns with, with the, or concerns were, were, were given regarding the whether the, the minutes were comprehensive enough and that maybe a response could be, can be given back to us.
Second.
Motion made for clarification by Vice Mayor Shum, seconded by Mr. Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes five zero. We need to, yeah. Item number two is to receive minutes from various boards and commissions.
With the exclusion of the Sustainability Advisory Board, I would make that motion.
I, I don't know why we, we don't receive the minutes from the Sustainability Advisory Board.
We could receive revisions later if we want, you mean?
They wanted to revise it, they can revise it.
I do that.
We're just receiving it.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made. Commissioner Amick, seconded by Commissioner Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes five zero. I think we voted on everything.
And I think, Jonathan, they approved the rest of the consent agenda, is that right?
City manager's report, Dave.
Mayor members of the commission, it's annual report time. So we're, you'll be seeing on a number of future CM reports, a number of different reviews from, from 2011. Commend them to your reading as you have an opportunity. Jonathan put together, I think, a nice comprehensive report for the activities in the city clerk's office. Will not make any comment about the average city commission meeting length. But good information there, appreciate his work in, in that and a lot of progress on a number of different items. Scott's got a report here on site plan review. And I think that that's good information to have, we're continuing to seek continuous improvement on our ability to process site plans. I think you see the, the business days that it's taking site plans to get approved and I think that that's good. We're also looking at some of the outlier ones that took a little bit longer, trying to see how much of that was some of the issues that maybe we had on coordination, maybe some of that with the applicant, continuing to work on that. But I think it's a good report and, and helpful to use that as a metric on that important work. Eileen put together this information in regards to ozone air quality. This is something that we are continuing to monitor. The Lawrence County Health Department has an advisory committee that we have representation on and we continue to monitor that. It's obviously a very important issue. Foremost, it's important for the, the air that we breathe, the quality standpoint there, but it can have financial consequences, development consequences if we move to a non-attainment designation, so it's something that we want to work on. Mark Bradford, our fire chief, put together the state of the department report, a lot of good information there. I think we've highlighted a lot of the successes of the department, the maintaining the ISO two rating, continued good work in, in getting a new recruit class in place. Department obviously has challenges too. He points out, you know, Fire Station One is going to be an area of, of increasing focus where we're going to see what we can be able to do to work on that aging infrastructure, but a really good report, appreciate that. Street Division, the same. There's some good photos in there of some snow removal, if you are anxious to see what that looks like.
We've forgotten what it looks like.
I did ask the Parks and Recreation Department to put up a sign and solicit some input on our dog park, mutt run, off-leash dog park there by Clinton Dam. It's a very well-used facility. It's not a whole lot more than a little bit of a paved parking lot, a little bit of a mud parking lot and a few, a few amenities and a lot of people with their pets. So if there's some, some good ideas that look like they can be met within some of our budget constraints, we'll try and, try and do that. We'll see how that kind of means of soliciting ideas works for us. We continue with the tree grate installation program downtown. We made, made some progress, probably going to get to about ten or so of them this year. We don't obviously harvest the mature good trees. We're the ones that need attention, we'll remove and then put in the grate and plant a, a new tree that's, that's good from a budget standpoint and that the, the grate expense doesn't all happen at once. It's also good because you don't have the deforestation look down Mass Street, so that seems to be working pretty well. Fog stands for fats, oils and grease. It's something we do not want in our sanitary sewer system. We have certain means, whether it's through the development process or through our regulations and our utility department, to work with some of the big fog contributors into our sanitary sewer system. One of the important ways is through education. You see some information that we're trying to get out to establishments that might be a little bit more involved in that issue than others, but that's, I think, some good information. And then finally, I think I've mentioned this earlier, but we've got some information about the much anticipated Twelfth Street lighted pathway there through the Oriad Neighborhood. It's nice to have an Oriad Neighborhood item that is hopefully not controversial. But the, that is installed and in, in good shape. A lot of, a lot of partners, as you would expect with something like this, KU student senate, we, it wasn't that long ago, then we had, you know, a good faithful attender from KU that really helped us see the, see the light, as it were, to move this project forward. KU put money into it, the city did, there was some city CDPG money in it and I think it's a, it's a neat project. So I think we're going to try and work on some type of dedication as well to make sure that we thank all the different partners. That is a long report. I appreciate your attention to all these things and we'll be, I'll be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Credit where credit's due, that was Elise Higgins.
That's correct.
And she's still in town and serving on, I wonder, one of the, our advisory boards, I'm trying to remember which one lately, but she's, she's still active and, and working on things too, so.
Had some email communication with her to let her know that it was underway.
Fantastic. Questions on the city manager's report?
Yes, sir.
Thanks. Thank you very much. Moving on now to our regular agenda, the VRAD.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Is that on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. This item stems from some concerns that the city has received from a property owner, Shane Lopez, who owns property near the intersection of Eighth and Mississippi regarding some AT&amp;T video-ready access device or VRAD box installations that are there at that property. And Mr. Lopez has expressed some concerns related to safety, aesthetics and size of the boxes and had requested that this item be discussed on your agenda. Of heightened concern is the fact that this installation is within a historic district. And Mr. Lopez is here this evening and I know that he wishes to address you on this subject as well. And in a few minutes, I'll pull up the photos that he asked me to bring up for him during his comments. Just some background information for you. We understand from AT&amp;T that they've installed a little over sixty of these boxes within the Lawrence community. This installation is one that we've received a number of comments about from the property owner. We've really not received a great number of complaints about any of the other installations with the exception of one. We received some concerns about an installation along Lawrence Avenue that was apparently mitigated with some landscaping. We do have representatives from AT&amp;T here this evening that can answer also any questions that you may have. Mike Scott is here, who's the area external affairs manager, and also Mark Thompson is here, who's the area manager for construction and engineering. In reviewing this issue with Mr. Lopez, we reviewed the regulations that the city has in place that would be applicable related to these installations. And this information is provided in your agenda materials tonight. To summarize, the city does have a franchise agreement with AT&amp;T, which follows the state franchise agreement. And under this, our understanding is that the city does have the ability to manage our rights-of-way, but state statute does have some limitations on what the city is able to impose in terms of regulations on providers of telecommunications, local exchange services. Under the state law, a city may not regulate the provisioning or quality of services, facilities or equipment. And legal staff has interpreted this law to preclude the city from regulating the size and appearance of these VRAD boxes. The city does have right-of-way management provisions, as I mentioned, which apply in this case. And these rules require that a utility obtain a right-of-way permit for any work that is done within the right-of-way or any activities that would disrupt traffic along the, the right-of-way. And additionally, a utility must work with the city regarding the protection of any public improvements that, that may be affected and/or street trees. And the regulations also require compliance with any other sections of the city code. For example, this installation was within a historic district, which requires historic review. With this installation, city staff believes that AT&amp;T complied with the city's regulations. As noted in the memo, the initial right-of-way permit that was received on this installation did not receive historic review on the city's side of the process. However, we believe that the end result of this historic review would have been the same, which is the mitigation with landscaping that has since occurred with the installation in this case. AT&amp;T and the city worked together with the property owner to provide additional landscaping than would typically be provided and the city augmented further the landscaping around the structures. Also, subsequent to the installation, when the concerns came about, from the historic review standpoint, city staff had requested a meeting with AT&amp;T, which they had, held with us, to talk about their plans for future installations and also particularly to make them aware of the locations of the historic districts within the community. In summary, with this item, we certainly understand that, that these types of installations create an impact on property owners, particularly property owners that have this right on their property. And this is one of those issues, I think, that at least to some degree, there's some amount of, of competing values. Because obviously with these types of services, there are demand for services like this in the community from the public and the public wants a competitive environment for these types of services. This evening, what staff would like is to get your feedback on this issue and get your direction, understanding what the commission's direction, what your goals might be with regard to this, these types of structures will help us determine if this is something that you want staff to take a more detailed look at and provide you a report back on what additional regulations may be possible that would also be within the legal framework. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this point.
Thank you. Questions? Thank you much.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Good evening, I'm Shane Lopez, currently at seven fourteen Mass. I own the property at seven thirty-eight Mississippi, which makes me the caretaker of the property at seven forty-four Mississippi. And that's the property we're talking about right now. For the next few hours, I'd like to talk about my visits with AT&amp;T and the city, but I think it would wear us all out. As you can see, these are three refrigerator-sized units that are adjacent to my property. These are also a point of service for AT&amp;T. They're not just, their technology, every time someone turns on U-verse, a guy shows up, parks there, leaves his truck running typically, puts out orange cones, hangs out there, often leaves trash, and then drives away and comes back a few hours later. When someone turns off U-verse services, the same thing happens. So AT&amp;T has changed the game in terms of right-of-way use. They now have above-ground, large-scale, ugly pieces of equipment and they've made our rights-of-way points of service. So it's pretty much like having a vending machine, machine in your side yard. I want to talk about the implications for having these in a historic neighborhood. So there are historic homes around this area, the hole, obviously the old West Lawrence area is, is on the historic register. Just for a little grounding, this is where obviously some of the battles during Quantrell's raid happened right here on this property. It is at the heart, in the heart of old West Lawrence and that was only considered after the fact. The hole was dug, the boxes were in, and finally someone said, oh, we might want to look into this as a historic issue. And then I think at that point, it was too late. And, you know, just to think about how this works from my point of view, I had to present my plans for the home I may build on that property to the full Historic Resource Commission before I could do anything going further. AT&amp;T got the privilege to do all of that after the fact. And in fact, mitigation was provided, as you can tell, you can barely see these boxes with the mitigation. The plants cover everything. Obviously, they don't. I'm told in two years, the plants will cover some things. Obviously, they won't. I do appreciate all the hard work of the city employees to help me mitigate the effects of these boxes, but this is what you see when you look at the corner of Eighth and Mississippi. So the historic issues are huge for me. There are sixty-plus setups just like this around Lawrence. There's one in a historic neighborhood and it's this one, and that's why I'm trying to draw special attention to it right now. There's safety implications. So if I were to build, my garage would be beyond the sidewalk and I would try to come out right by that telephone pole and the sightline triangle is obliterated by these boxes. I said, okay, sightline triangle's already obliterated, I'll put a fence up, that way my neighbors don't have to see those boxes. Well, you can't obliterate the sightline triangle. It's already done. So we have this issue at my corner and I deal with it every time I go to that property and will have to deal with it two to three times a day if I build on that property. And we have this issue at the other sixty-plus locations. They just haven't been analyzed. So I would, that's one request I'll make down the road. Finally, we have implications for the future use of public space. In your current code, there's nothing to preclude another telecom company to build another set of boxes just like that next to these boxes. There's nothing that precludes someone from putting up a cellphone tower like the atrocious ones above the Oriad Hotel. There's nothing that precludes them from doing that all the way down that right-of-way. And I think that's a problem. There's nothing that precludes any of our utility companies to have a point-of-service relationship with the right-of-way. So folks can basically live in that right-of-way all day, every day. So I think our code needs to be reviewed and I actually think AT&amp;T is in violation of many parts of Article nine A, Chapter sixteen, Article nine A. I've asked Tony two times, I've asked Diane three times for a breakdown of how AT&amp;T met each part of Article nine A. And I was told each time, they met all parts of Article nine A. I think they're in violation of parts A, D, E and H. I think F could also be used to kind of move them away from this kind of practice. Finally, I want to say, what I'm expecting is that we don't let this kind of stuff happen in historic neighborhoods, so I'd like these boxes moved out of our historic neighborhood. This is the cheapest solution to an AT&amp;T problem. This is not a great public service. It is the cheapest solution to AT&amp;T's lack of foresight when dealing with video-ready technology. And I don't think we need that in historic neighborhood, I frankly don't believe we need it in Lawrence. The right-of-way articles need to be revised, so I would propose not only do we look at them, not only does the commission look at them and the city look at them, city employees, but I believe that we could have a community task force that deals with these rights-of-way issues each time they come up. And finally, I believe each site should be visited by someone on the city team. We have sixty-plus sites across Lawrence and I think each one needs to be evaluated in terms of its safety, its effect on the neighborhood and also its effect on the future use of the rights-of-way in those neighborhoods. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Good evening, it's Mike Scott with AT&amp;T. Thank you for the chance to talk with you about this issue. It's a, it's a thorny issue to, to say the least. It's one that we've dealt with Mr. Lopez on numerous occasions and, and it's one that probably needs to come to the attention of the city commission and to the staff. It's, as was discussed earlier by Assistant City Manager Diane, it, we are fully compliant in the right-of-way and we went through... the right-of-way, and we went through all the special permits that were needed. We've worked with Mr. Lopez on numerous occasions and with the city staff on numerous occasions. We've met with them, we've met with Mr. Lopez. I think we've done everything that we can. We've made improvements, as you can see, at the location above and beyond what is normally expected, and that's just the way that we like to do business. We're not one of those companies, I think, that was portrayed earlier, that just go in and put up the facility and then move away and never think about it again. Mark Thompson, our area manager for construction and engineering, he has two engineers here on-site in Lawrence that work continuously in the city, and I think we do a very good job. Now, U-verse is a new product of ours. It's an IP-based product that requires new technology. It's one that we've had a tremendous amount of success in, not only in the city, but in the state and across the nation, and it's one that has brought, as was mentioned earlier, competition to the city, and I think that improves the quality of the product, not only for us, but for the incumbent provider as well. So it's one that we've had a lot of success with, and one that we've taken great lengths to go to, to all the proper measures in order to install. We do have a statewide franchise that allows us to do this, and then, of course, we act, and I think in a good constructive manner and a corporate manner, in adhering to all the right-of-ways issues that the city has and that the state has. And so we're, again, it was mentioned that here in Lawrence, we have over 60 of these types of installations throughout the city, and we've had, I guess, one other complaint that we were able to handle with some additional landscaping problems, and this is the type of, and again, we've made improvements to this location as well. So we're sorry, actually, I'm very sorry that Mr. Lopez has these type of feelings, but we've worked with him on a continual basis, and honestly, there's just, there hasn't been any appeasing what I think he wants us to do, and I think you heard him say earlier that he wants the equipment removed, and that's just not possible at this state. I mean, we're in service through this location and one that is vital to our entry into the city, so we, again, we've tried to work with him, and we're, again, fully compliant with the codes and the permits, and I wish we could have arrived at a better situation before coming to the city commission, but that's where it stands right now, and we're hoping that if there's anything else, I mean, we always have an open ear, and if there's anything else that the property owner or the city commission or the staff has in mind, then we'd be willing to listen.
Mr. Scott, thanks for being here tonight. Does AT&amp;T have any leeway on where they can place this particular apparatus, or does it have to be at an exact location based on your service to the area? In other words, could it be a half-block away, or two blocks away, or does it have to be in, because, not this one, but in general? If you're serving an area, say, like old West Lawrence, might that be a block this way or a block that way, or is the technology dictate where it's going to be set up at?
Okay. Commissioner, I'm going to ask Mark Thompson to come up and answer that. He's our area manager for construction and engineering, and he can certainly answer that.
Good evening. Mark Thompson with AT&amp;T. The question about the proximity, it has to be, because of the technology, it does have to be in very close proximity of where it's at right now. There's, there might be a leeway of 25, 30 feet, but it's got to be very close to where the existing infrastructure was at, just because of the existing technology.
Is the underground portion of it in conduit?
There is some conduit right there at that location, yes, and some of it then is just direct buried right into the boxes.
Then the other question I have, are there other styles of equipment that are lower-profile that are available, or is this a...
This is pretty much a standard. There are larger ones, but this is probably the lowest-profile one that's on the market right now.
I think I saw three pieces of equipment there in that picture.
Yes.
Does each location have three pieces?
Yes, they will.
So, you select, how do you select a spot for these V-Red boxes?
A lot of the selection process is done through the sales group, doing an analyzation of the neighborhoods where they think we'll have the greatest opportunity for sales.
So it has nothing to do with the existence of your existing infrastructure?
It has a lot to do with that. All of the sites that they, or all of the areas that they evaluate, or most of them are all existing areas. This is a new technology we're bringing in, trying to overlay on our existing infrastructure.
So, this must have some sort of special technological advantage to be there? I guess you're saying it has to be within 25 or 30 feet of its exact location. How about future installations? Are those all based on the potential market share that you can acquire, or is it based on the number of households?
All of those things go, all those things go into account, you know, whether, first thing they're going to look at is, you know, the opportunities for sales, you know, how many customers can we serve? Then obviously, some economic things get driven into it, whether it's going to be something that we can place and then still, you know, be able to meet budgets and those kind of things on.
Okay. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Technology changes rather rapidly nowadays. If technology changes to where these boxes are obsolete, will they be removed from the property?
Typically, if the boxes are no longer of use, we're not using them anymore, yes, they would be down the road sometime if that ever happened, and yes, we'll typically remove the boxes.
They're white, they're not green?
They are. They're more beige, they're not really white, they're kind of a beige color.
Why not a color that blends in?
They're, AT&amp;T kind of settled in on the beige color. The darker the color, the more heat issues, thermal characteristics, thermal issues you come up with, and a decision was made to kind of standardize on the beige, because it was, a dark green, for example, obviously, would absorb more heat in the summertime. The equipment inside these devices also create heat. There's fans in them, and there's ways for air to flow through to keep them cool, but that's, you know, kind of what AT&amp;T standardized on was the beige color.
Mr. Thompson, Mr. Scott, when the decision was made to locate the box in old West Lawrence, was there other locations looked at in old West Lawrence to have this equipment installed?
It would have had to have been located really close to the alley there where it's located at now. It could have maybe shifted just a little bit. That was the only place to be able to set that box, because of the existing infrastructure that was there.
But if it's based on sales and potential sales, doesn't that mean it has the ability to move anywhere in that neighborhood?
Well, from that location, then it, the infrastructure that's existing goes out, and there are lines from that location that were already there that went to each one of the residents or living units or homes in that area. Those were already existing.
I'm just curious, if we were to do a before-and-after shot for the V-Red, this additional service, was there anything above ground prior, or are all three of these a part of just this new service?
There was an existing box there next to the pole. There was a smaller green box, but with the additional equipment, it had to be increased in size, but there was one that was there. The box there on the right of that picture, there was another box sitting right there at that location that was smaller than that, and that particular box does not have any of the electronics in it. But the one that was there before was a green box.
Okay. Thanks.
No questions? Thank you. Further public comment? I had a question for Mr. Lopez. So I'm recalling a conversation with, that I had with him. He was indicating some size and configuration options that he may have located in some of his research.
Sure, sure. Just to clarify, there was a box where the biggest box was, and it was about the size of a fire hydrant. So this is a huge increase in size. And then also, at night, we have two red eyes that look at us from one of those boxes. We have constant whirring from the fans. So you have some of the sheets that describe the sound limitations, the sound specifications, and the heat, and the brightness of the lights, all that's in there, because other cities have grappled with this. San Francisco has grappled with this, but small towns across the eastern seaboard have grappled with this. Pretty much everywhere AT&amp;T goes with U-verse, people are upset. As they were talking, I've never met Mr. Scott, even though I've tried to contact him a number of times. What they do is they tie into old, existing Southwestern Bell technology in the cheapest way possible. So in other cities, folks have realized that this technology is not 21st century technology. This is 1990s technology that they're kind of duct-taping together, and they do so in this fashion, when in fact, they could do it with a lower profile, when in fact, they could bury the boxes, when in fact, they could move it from the corner, but that would cost them money, because their existing telephone lines were already at the corner. So this has been discussed in city after city after city, and AT&amp;T has done a good job of saying, "That's, we're a franchisee, we're good to go." So, there are many ways to resolve this, but all of those ways cost a little more money. And I understand that they're out to make money, and they've targeted certain neighborhoods in Lawrence, and they don't provide the service in other neighborhoods, I understand that. But in a historic neighborhood, my responsibilities are way different in terms of building. So I had to fight and do lots of things to get my design approved. You had 100 housing starts last year, you might lose one, based on the way this has been handled, because they did not go through the proper channels. They did not get historic resource approval. They did so retroactively, which means there was never any chance for public comment. So to answer your question, Mayor, there are many cities grappling with this. This, I've made numerous calls to the CEO's office. There are a line of people dealing with this exact issue from city after city after city, and every city is struggling with it, and every city is coming up with new and different solutions. Sometimes boxes are moved, sometimes a right-of-way commission is established, sometimes folks realize that we don't want this kind of hardware. Other times, folks say you can put them in, but you can only provide points of service at these boxes certain times of the day. So there are many different ways to address it, but I don't think just letting them be is adequate.
Questions?
I have a question. Mr. Scott, you had mentioned that you were glad that this was coming up, and it was probably something we should discuss. I guess I'd be, I'd just be curious what your thoughts are as far as how we might deal with this going forward.
Well, I said I was glad that it came to your attention, other than the fact that we'd probably reached an impasse with Mr. Lopez. And that was my point on bringing that up.
Okay. I thought you meant in general on these things. So, the box that was there before was green, you say, but I thought you said the box that was there before had electrical components in it, and this one does not. It was the opposite, right? This one has electrical components.
The box that was there before did not have electrical components in it.
All right. I misheard you. Thanks.
Question?
Yes.
I was reading over your literature earlier, and it talked about pole-mounted V-Reds, so how come we can't use pole-mounted ones? And what do those look like, based on the existing profiles we have right now?
I've not seen a pole-mounted, other than just in the documentation. To my knowledge, Kansas does not have any pole-mounted V-Reds. Basically, it's the same box that's kind of there on the left, that there's a bracket that's built that just, it attaches to a pole, and it's basically, it's basically the same, the same box, except it's pole-mounted to get it up. Just in some large cities, in alleys and stuff where there's not a lot of room, some of them have been mounted on a pole.
Okay. Question?
The gentleman whose property this is indicated that, his research says that these can be subterranean, is that, is he correct? Is that a possibility or not?
The box itself is designed to be above ground.
Have they put these in anywhere, to your knowledge, where they are below the soil?
I don't have any that I'm aware of in my area that we've put below ground. They are, they would be very susceptible to humidity and moisture, which underground kind of creates an issue there.
Partially submerged. Any thought on that? Partially?
It would either have, I don't know that it could even be partially, just because of humidity issues, airflow issues.
How far down, how far down, how deep are the phone wires you tie into at that location?
Typically, throughout the right-of-ways, the cables that'll come into there will be somewhere between 24 and 30 inches deep typically, at least when they were installed, and then they all will come into that location, to that larger box on the right.
Would be possible, then, to go down some and with a retaining wall or something to reduce the profile? I mean, just in general.
We'd have to deal with any kind of moisture or rain that would, you know, would accumulate at the base of it, too.
Okay. Thank you.
Along with that, quite a few years ago now, AT&amp;T was putting in these below-ground boxes. I was talking to Mr. Scott before the meeting, and these things had either an air conditioner, dehumidifier, or something on it for the equipment that was down below. Would that not work on these?
They're basically, they're basically a basement. They're environmentally controlled, they're very large. Most of them would not fit on a right-of-way. Typically, those are set in easements, because they could be anywhere from 10 to 20 feet square, and probably, I don't know, 15 feet deep.
If you give us enough time, we'll redesign this for you tonight.
Okay.
I just remembered that we've used those in the past, and that we've approved...
There are a very limited number of them around, and they're typically not in right-of-ways.
This, I think you've got 60 of these out in the community that may work in their locations. This location, I mean, it's, I don't know how you make this one work. It's in a historic neighborhood, it's, there's just no room for it to be camouflaged, it's bright white. I mean, I can completely sympathize, and I get, you know, we get requests sometimes from homeowners for various things that, like, "Oh, come on, are you complaining about that?" But this is, this is one where he wanted to build his house, and I can understand an issue here in this particular neighborhood, in this particular lot. Here, you know, where 60 of them are good, this number 61, something else has got to occur in order to make this work in this neighborhood. And I, I mean, everything that's been suggested, it's, you know, it's like being shot down. We can't paint it. Well, it can be, it can be green, it's just that the electronics need a little bit more cooling. There's, there are solutions here, and I just want to know which one, you know, will work the best for AT&amp;T to help on this, because I just don't see that one working. work the best for, for AT&amp;T to, to help on this, because I just don't see that one working at that particular location. There's a whole nother question here, that I don't like, the fact that as technology evolves, you know, you know, we never would have imagined that, you know, for, for, we never would have imagined internet to begin with. We never would have imagined that this would involve such a, such a large box in a right-of-way. You know, next year, it's, it's a, you know, or 10 years from now, it's, it's a, it's a much larger box with a, with a, you know, with a wind turbine on top. There I go again. You know, maybe, you know, and we see right now these fiber optic throughout the neighborhood, or throughout the city, that particularly in downtown area, look like matchsticks everywhere, that Mr. Lopez brought those to my attention, too, and, and now I see them everywhere. There, there's this ever-evolving sort of layers of technology, and without any control whatsoever, we're supposed to allow just anything to go in? What possible control do we have with the city? I mean, it seems like the state of Kansas may not be allowing us to do a whole heck of a lot, but what about a, a right-of-way commission? Is there any, you know, do we have any ability to control any of this?
I can start some of the discussion. I, I worked on this issue about 10 or 12 years ago, when I was in the legal department. And Mr. Scott may remember, there was times when the, the city's ability to regulate the, the right-of-way was limited, as opposed to what it had been before. But I have to tell you, Commissioners, we haven't done the exhaustive look at either the state law, or what other communities around the country are doing. We've done a little bit of preliminary discussions with a few other Kansas cities. Under our existing laws, we think that it, it complies. And, but we haven't looked to see whether or not there are some additional regulations that either Kansas cities could use, that Kansas law allows, or maybe there's something from another state. We are limited by state law, as to what we can tell a investor-owned utility in its use of the right-of-way. But we haven't, I can't say that we've exhaustively looked at everything yet. So, Mayor, yes, I mean, you can have different structures. I don't know what a right-of-way commission or review panel would do that wouldn't necessarily be something that staff would, would probably have to go out and inspect, and then report back to that group. It's really going to be a matter of law. Do they have the right to install what they're proposing to do, or not? And then, is there something that we can regulate? We haven't, we've done a little bit of looking at it, we've looked at primarily what our law is, and what the state law says, but there may be some other communities in Kansas, or maybe elsewhere, that have done this. I mean, the, AT&amp;T is a national company, so they've obviously done this in other communities. We've looked at it a little bit. Is that a fair, I mean, I know Diane's done most of the, of the research on it. The one thing I do want to say is that, you know, as we look at this, not only about additional regulations, we'd also want to look at our, our staffing ability to enforce something like this. I mean, we're not saying that we can't do it, I just, we want to be cognizant of that issue as well.
The other part of that, I mean, there was, I guess there was a question in there, too, that I started out with. You know, what can be done? Again, you know, with 60 of these, it works, seems to, the way you've done it seems to work, 61 or wherever we are here. You know, I, I think that, looking at this site, being out there, that there is room for, for some improvement. What, what is, is there, what is possible from AT&amp;T there to? I appreciate you guys' involvement in the community, you're always good neighbors, and, and I think we've, you know, we've got to that point where here's a, you know, where you're, where you're great 98% of the time, and nobody's, nobody works out 100%, and is there something that we can do on this particular site that's a little out of the ordinary?
Well, maybe I should retract my statement about being at an impasse with Mr. Lopez. Maybe we can, we can keep working with him, and see if there's anything that would, you know, work for him, and work for us as well. I mean, I, other than that, I, I don't, I don't know what else to suggest, and, and we can even use the city as, as a mediator, or somebody that can, can work with us as well. But, you know, we're, we're certainly not close to the idea of just saying, "This is it, you know, forget about it, we're done." But if, if there's something that else that we can do, within reason, that, that would appease the property owners and, and the neighborhood, then we'd be willing to look at it.
May I maybe suggest, then, that we advise Diane, or whoever, I think you've been working on this, haven't you? And Mr. Lopez, and, and Mr. Scott, that we can maybe facilitate this, and see if we can get any, anywhere with that.
I think that, I think the issue is just try to lower the profile. If it has to sit there at that location, then anything to lower that profile would be of a, a great advance, I think. You know, it's, I've, I've done some building, and do, you know, things, and you sit and look at a project, and you say, "This doesn't look very good," or "It doesn't fit." There's always a way to do something. And I know AT&amp;T wants to do a prescribed set-in in every job, because otherwise, you get everybody saying, "Well, I want it six inches deep," or "12 inches deep," or "Two feet over this way." But in this particular case, the applicant, or the homeowner, does point out that the historic district was not contacted first. I think he's right. So it just, I guess what I would chime in with the mayor, is just in terms of continuing to be good neighbors with us, and you certainly are, is if there isn't something we can do to lower that profile, and, and help that piece of property out.
We'll certainly do the best we can to, to come up with a satisfactory conclusion of this.
Super.
Yeah, even, the, the painting of it, if there was a way to improve the cooling a little bit, paint that green, might be something that'd be really helpful, especially as the, the things around that grow up here in the next couple of years, they blend in, certainly better than the current color, anyway. Thanks.
That'd be, that'd be good. Thank you very much. The other part of this, is there, is there interest in having staff look further into what our options may be, just going forward in the future, with whatever technology may throw at us, what our, what our options are? Or not?
Well, I'd, I'd be interested. I mean, this obviously is a situation occurred because of the change in technology, and I'd, we'd be better off if we're more prepared, or understand what our, what our different options are with regards to this kind of event. It may, may not happen, but certainly, there's a probability that it will.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. And I don't know if it's even just clarifying that maybe, in, in historic districts, anyway, that we do ask first, and have the ability to review that? Is, or do we have that ability? Yeah. Okay.
I think that's the.
In this case, we did not. That's part of the problem.
Okay, okay. I wasn't sure if that was just a courtesy on their part, or if it's something they need to do, so.
Do we have an option under Home Rule to have a different arrangement with the utilities, other than the state franchise?
The answer to that, Vice Mayor, I believe is no. We will take a look at that. I believe that the statutes governing this type of use of the public right-of-way are uniform. We don't have the ability to adopt a charter ordinance to establish something different. That's, that's my understanding. We'll, we'll take a more exhaustive look at it. I think one of the things, one of the best things we can do, let's just talk to some of the other Kansas communities, we'll show them some of the photos, we'll just see, you know, how are you guys doing with this type of technology? And they may say, "Well, we're, we're not very successful at it either, we'd sure like to know what you guys come up with." Or maybe they've come up with something better. We'll, we'll see.
But if I understand right now, what we've got is, we've got the agreement with the utility, and as part of that, they, they agree that they'll comply with all the city code. And if there's something that needs to be done inside the city code, that's going to take care of any of those changes, we need to be working on that part. Is that correct?
I think it's a good point.
So, that's kind of where we are. Either our code's in place that, that handles these kind of situations, or it's not. And, but we got to make sure first, you know, that we followed all of that, and, you know, maybe we slipped on this one.
Would you care for a motion to direct staff?
I think it'd be helpful.
Okay.
Direct us to continue to look at this issue, and see if there are city code changes that would be appropriate to reduce the neighborhood impact of these types of installations, or similar installations.
Move.
And in the meantime, facilitate a meeting between Mr., on this particular site.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Shum, seconded by Commissioner Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. Thank you. Next up, we have a text amendment regarding artificial turf.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mary Miller, a current planner with the city. I'm before you tonight with the draft language for the text amendment, which would allow the limited use of synthetic turf as a landscaping material when approved through alternative compliance. And I'll briefly go over the timeline associated with this text amendment. In March of 2011, the property owner, Frontier Apartments, was notified of non-compliance. The landscaping that was being installed, synthetic turf, was not compliant with the approved site plan, and synthetic turf is not an approved landscape material per the development code. The property owner requested that a text amendment be initiated in April. The city commission did initiate that at their May 3 meeting. The planning commission considered this at their June meeting, and deferred action to the August meeting, where they recommended denial by a vote of 6 to 2. And the city commission considered this at the September 23 meeting, deferred action, and directed staff to develop the draft language. And before I go over the draft language, I was going to point out the existing language regarding synthetic plants, or artificial plants. Section 20-1009, Artificial Plants, states that no artificial plants or vegetation may be used to meet any standard of this section. We have definitions of landscape material, which include living materials, as well as, such as trees and shrubs, as well as nonliving materials, such as rocks, pebbles, sand, and bark, and other decorative or embellishing items. And landscaping is defined as any combination of living plants. This may include structural features, and it can also include irrigation system, mulches, topsoil use, soil preparation, and tree preservation. And I'll go through the draft language. Article 10 is the section of the code that contains the landscaping provisions and requirements. Section 20-1007 contains the alternative compliance. And section, subsection A is applicability. Currently, you can use alternative compliance when it is impossible or impractical to meet the landscape standards due to site conditions. Or if improved environmental conditions would result, as a result of your alternative compliance. And this is used often in floodplain or stormwater issues. Or if safety would necessitate the alternative compliance. In the draft language, we've added an applicability criteria for when the use of synthetic turf would be appropriate. And we've identified that as in areas where natural vegetation may be difficult to establish and maintain, based on space constraints. If you have narrow or very irregular sha, sorry, shaped areas, you have areas that are heavily shaded, or areas of high traffic. Section B of the alternative compliance section lists the approval criteria. Currently to be approved, the alternative compliance must equal or exceed traditional compliance in terms of material quality, the visual effect, the effectiveness in meeting the landscape provisions in Article 10, and the purpose of the landscape section, and the material durability. We've added a approval criteria that alternative compliance or synthetic turf would also need to comply with standards in Section 20-1011. This is a new section that's being proposed with standards, U standards and product specification standards. Currently, the procedure for alternative compliance begins with provision of an alternative compliance landscape plan, and provision of a justification or explanation for the need of alternative compliance. We've added a procedure for synthetic turf. Now first, you would establish the need for synthetic turf, explaining why the property is not suitable, the land is not suitable for native or natural vegetation. And you would identify the areas to be surfaced with dimensions, particularly the percentage of the entire site, to ensure that your landscaping is being done within the prescribed limits. And the person would provide the warranty and specifications of the proposed synthetic turf, the installer's contact information and credentials, as well as a sample of the turf. These would be the, the steps that would be used in order to evaluate the alternative compliance request. As I mentioned earlier, Section 20-1009 contains a prohibition on the use of artificial plants. That would be revised, and it's shown in the draft language in your staff memo, to allow an exception for the use of synthetic turf when approved through alternative compliance. And then the Section 20-1011 is a new section that's being proposed with standards. The U standards, there are two being proposed. One is to limit the amount of an area that can be surfaced with synthetic turf to no more than 10% of the total site area. And the second is to require mitigation planting, to mitigate the effect of the use of synthetic turf. Primarily, we're looking at the heat, the effect of heat. Synthetic turf gets hotter than most other surfaces, and actually increases the heat of the area. But we're also looking at oxygen generation and carbon sequestering. Staff has recommended one tree and two shrubs, but I'd like to go into these U standards a little more detail. When we were evaluating the U standards, and as you noticed in the staff memo, we looked at various apartment complexes, looked at their site plans, and tried to see where would synthetic turf fit our applicability criteria, as far as being narrow areas, or perhaps areas that would be shaded by being close to a building, or high activity areas. And we calculated the percentage of the site that could fit that criteria. And I spoke with the applicant just a moment ago, and she informed me that I had inadvertently calculated the percentage on the total site area, when I believe what I'm showing here is phase one. So while we calculate the percentage at about 10.9%, she informed me that percentage is closer to 7%. The exchange has a very low percentage of about 2.3%, but that's because of the large areas of open space. We have a jurisdictional wetland, and then we have the stormwater detention area. Looking at the Grove, it was a percentage of 4.3% of the total site could qualify for synthetic turf using our criteria. We looked at one commercial property, Tractor Supply Company, and that was 7.6%. Based on these figures, staff recommended a maximum limit of 10%. And even though we used the incorrect figure for the Frontier, which would be closer to 7%, 10% would probably be a pretty good maximum limit. It's just the limit that, over which you cannot exceed. When we look at the density and dimensional standards in Section 20-601, it lists the maximum impervious surface area in the various multi-dwelling districts. You are limited to 75 to 80% of impervious surface, which means you're required to have between 20 and 25% of pervious. 10% would be nearly half of the required pervious surface, and in our opinion, that is an appropriate limit. The second standard was the mitigation planting, and I had talked with the applicant this week regarding this. We had set it at one tree and two shrubs per 100 square feet. There is no scientific data as exactly how much natural vegetation is needed to mitigate the impact of synthetic vegetation in terms of heat, or, as I mentioned, the oxygen or the carbon dioxide. But you'll see in the right column, we note that on the three samples I gave you, using this amount of synthetic turf, it would require about 200 trees and approximately 400 shrubs in addition to the required landscaping. If this mitigation was revised to one tree and two shrubs per 500 square feet of synthetic turf, you would be more about 40 trees and about 90 shrubs. And these are large areas, so there would be space for these. The one tree and two shrubs per 500 square feet may be a more reasonable figure. This would require a change to the draft language, because we are proposing the one per 100. And when we look at the need to mitigate the effect of synthetic turf, we're looking at some of the heat studies. Brigham Young University did a study, there have been various other studies, and the synthetic turf industry themselves confirmed that there is an issue with synthetic turf and generating heat. They look at the different surfaces on a day, they measured it and calculated the average temperature. Natural turf was about 78 degrees on the average, concrete was 94 degrees, asphalt was 110, and synthetic turf was 117. This is one reason we would never recommend synthetic turf for parking lot islands, because the purpose of parking lot island landscaping is to reduce the heat island effect of the parking lot and the massive asphalt. But if we surface it with synthetic turf, it would just add to the heat. You would actually be ahead if you just removed the parking lot islands altogether. And then the product specifications would sus- And then the product specifications was the second part of the new standards. Applicant and staff in agreement on the specifications with the minor changes that I noted in the staff update memo. There were two changes made to the infill requirements, the maximum and the minimum height. And also, we removed the term "dural fill" from the type of infill that would be permitted, as that's a proprietary term and not a generic term. I also wanted to point out, I remembered that during our last commission meeting, someone asked me, "Where would low-maintenance landscape fall in the heat?" Scheme. And basically, if low-maintenance landscaping, if you're just utilizing native plants or ground cover, you would be with the natural turf. However, if you used zerescaping, which has more rock, maybe some gravel, you would probably tend toward the concrete. You wouldn't reach the asphalt unless you were using primarily black rocks in your landscaping. We are recommending revisions to the definitions. We've recommended revisions to landscape material and landscaping to include synthetic turf when approved through alternative compliance. And we're adding definitions of synthetic turf and turf or turf grasses, just to reduce any possible confusion. One item that we don't have any draft language for was the suggestion that appeals from alternative compliance for synthetic turf be brought to the City Commission rather than to the BZA. Currently, all appeals from alternative compliance are taken to the BZA. Alternative compliance applies to everything in the landscape section, so you can appeal a determination of alternative compliance from parking lot requirements, interior parking lot landscaping, the amount of area that's being landscaped in a parking lot, from the perimeter parking lot landscaping, from the requirement to have berms adjacent to perimeter parking lots, and from the buffer yard requirement, the width as well as the plantings. And if this amendment is adopted, it would be the synthetic turf as well. Staff would recommend that if you do choose to have the appeals brought to the City Commission, that you would hear all appeals from the alternative compliance determinations rather than dividing them up between the City Commission and the BZA. The Planning Commission asked us to draft several options for them. We had an option of outright prohibition of synthetic turf even with alternative compliance. We had an option where it was permitted through alternative compliance, and it specifically stated that. And we had an option where it was outright permitted with no restrictions. They reviewed the options, and they voted 6 to 2 at their August 24 meeting to not accept any and to leave the language as it was and recommend denial of the text amendment. The draft language is before you tonight, and your various action options would include to deny the amendment. This could be done with a simple majority vote. To return the amendment to staff or to the Planning Commission for further review with direction. That would also require a simple majority vote. Or to approve the text amendment with or without changes. And then there's the one change that I did make in the IBR pertaining to the product specifications, or any other changes, and four votes would be required since that vote would be contrary to the Planning Commission's action. I know the applicant is here tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mary. Questions for Mary this time?
The Planning, you've got a bunch of moving parts here in this one. The Planning Commission voted against any change, or?
Correct. They voted to leave the language as it was. We had two commissioners that voted in to not to deny it, and they were interested in clarifying the language so that alternative compliance could be approved, such as at the Oriet Hotel. They wanted that to be clarified, so... But the others did vote to deny the text amendment.
Thank you. Questions for Mary this time? Thank you. Here from the applicant.
Good evening. I'm Jane Eldridge. I'm here on behalf of the applicant for the text amendment. And I think the first thing that's important to do is to explain that I'm not a technology person. So if we could turn this off, and I'll use the Elmo, I would appreciate it. The next thing I'd like to talk about is a little bit of a history lesson. Because Mary has told you about some of the history of this, but not all of it. And I think that it's important just to understand this in the context of how it arose. This is the site plan for the Oriet Hotel. And on this site plan, as you can see, there is synthetic turf that is in green. This site plan was approved, and when the synthetic turf went in, the planning office noted, Mr. McCullough, notified the architect and the contractor that, in his opinion, synthetic turf did not meet the existing city code. The planning staff then approved this existing city code under our existing alternative compliance language because our existing language provides for ways of handling unique situations because of topography, soil, site constraints, and other considerations. And that was an appropriate request, an appropriate approval. And when Mr. McCullough was quizzed, both at the Planning Commission and by you all as to whether he stands by this decision, he said yes. And we agree. That was the appropriate decision. So when the same people had the Frontier Apartments to deal with, they handled it exactly the same way. They had a site plan approval. They were notified that, "Oh, we don't think this fits." They said, "Well, it fit before." The staff gave them three alternatives. One, put in grass. Two, seek a variance. Three, a text amendment. And that was in April. Those were the three alternatives that the staff provided because they were trying to work with this development. As you all will recall, this is on the site of where the Boardwalk Apartments were, that we had that horrendous fire in October of 2005. So as they moved forward with the text amendment, that was initiated in April, and you can tell that by the number on the text amendment, that it was initiated in April. Two days before the Planning Commission meeting, there was a staff report. Mary is very diligent and has done a lot of reading and internet work, and there was a staff report that was about a foot and a half thick. So the Planning Commission deferred that until August. The text amendment that was prepared by the applicant was a text amendment to permit synthetic turf as a matter of right in the landscaping. And that was to simply modify the definitions of landscaping to provide synthetic turf. At the August 24 Planning Commission meeting, the only vote that was taken was the vote as to whether to recommend approval or denial of the text amendment that was presented. There was also discussion about what were the other alternatives. And the other alternatives were, "Well, maybe we need to clarify alternative compliance to make it clear under what conditions synthetic turf would apply, or we ought to simply change the ordinance so we prohibit it." The only action that was taken at that Planning Commission meeting was the denial of the matter of right. Half the commissioners who were there said they would be supporting alternative compliance, but that wasn't the issue before them because that wasn't the text amendment. So it's an error to say that the Planning Commission voted not to include it at all. They also did not take a vote on whether to prohibit it entirely in the city of Lawrence. I showed you the Oriet Hotel landscaping, and Mary was using a lot of suggestions about if there's a percentage, what kind of percentage that should be. At the Oriet Hotel, the whole site area is 32,604 square feet. The turf, the artificial synthetic turf, accounts for 2,784 square feet, which is 8.5% of the total area. It's also important to note at the Oriet Hotel that 12 trees were required. They actually installed 28. 54 shrubs were required. They actually installed 203. So if you were to include any sort of percentage, I don't think there's any question that the Oriet meets that. When you met in September, you seemed to be inclined to look at alternative compliance. And if you look at the Frontier site, which is one of the examples that Mary used, Mary, the Frontier site is this entire area, and it includes 336,124 square feet. It's site planned in two phases. Phase 1 is on this side of Fireside Drive, and Phase 2 is on the west and north side. In building Phase 1, they also built the pool and clubhouse. The perfectly colored green that you'll see on this site plan shows where the synthetic turf is. When you look at the proportions that are on the Frontier landscaping, here's the entire site area, 336,129 square feet. The installed synthetic turf is 22,232 feet. That's 6.6% of the site. The trees that were required were 107. What they've actually installed is 157. The shrubs that were required were 106. What they installed were 868. We don't have a complaint with installing additional trees and shrubs, not because there's any evidence about oxygen or any of the rest of that, but because it makes a more pleasing landscape. Part of alternative compliance is to be sure that you have as high a quality or higher quality than you would if you'd followed all the landscaping. So instead of natural turf, synthetic turf, but beef up the other kinds of landscaping to make it a prettier spot. Now, I had written to you, and I don't know if you all have the availability...
Jane, are we getting close here to?
I didn't know we had minutes. I'm so sorry. Okay. The only other thing I would say is that the parking area, if... How many minutes do we have?
Five, actually.
Okay. I've written to you. I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of the things that we're requesting. I would also like to add that this was the first I knew that this would not be applying to any of the landscape parking areas. It's important to remember that the Brigham Young study that Mary cites was done in 2002, and it was done with rubber tire. Infill was the product that had been used, and that has been specifically excluded, and we agree with that exclusion. So I think it has no application in this study. I would also say that I hope we aren't going away from site plan reviews with appeals to the City Commission because that's what our code provides for now. And the recommendation is that we go two ways. Board of Zoning Appeals on part of a land, on part of a site plan, and City Commission on the other part of the site plan. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Questions from Eldridge.
Jane?
Yes.
The 336,129 square feet at Frontier includes a large portion that's not developed at this time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So...
That's the site.
All right.
For which there is a site.
So if that never gets developed, probably is going to get developed, then you are at, what, 100% of the landscape in artificial turf, or nearly?
If there were a 10%, we don't believe that... Look, the problem with the recommendation for narrow strips is that those aren't the unique conditions. They may be part of them, but the other things have to do with soil condition, topography. The fact that on the Frontier site, for instance, a whole lot had to be excavated as a result of that fire. So you have to look at each one of those unique situations and see if there's something here that makes alternative compliance make more sense than the standard. And that's why trying to limit it to narrow strips, I think, is wrong. But if you want to add more, add more trees and shrubs, I think it's fine. There's no scientific basis for it. And so what's there would be 6.6% of the...
I just want to make sure I understood that correctly, that you're including that...
Yeah, all the trees and shrubs.
That percentage includes all the undeveloped area that's left on that land yet.
Yes. And that doesn't, already installed, is more than enough trees or more than enough shrubs to meet that requirement.
Second question. How is that area unique in that it wouldn't support a traditional lawn or landscape venue? I went out, walked around, and looked at... I mean, I don't see a topography issue. I don't know what's underneath the grass because it's not grass. It's artificial turf, so...
It is. And the alternative compliance statute ordinance, as it reads today, talks about topography, soil, vegetation, space constraints, or other site conditions are such that full compliance is impossible or impractical, or improved environmental quality would result. Now, we had, in this situation, because of all the excavation that was required and because there are shadows and there are some narrow places, it was more practical to put in the synthetic turf. And because the aesthetics are an important part of it, it did not make sense to put in a patch of synthetic turf, a patch of natural turf. Think about the way that looks. This is an attractive site that is so much better, that has no pesticides, that has no herbicides, that has much reduced water. It is the most eco-friendly apartment complex in Lawrence. And that's why we believe that it both meets the improved environmental quality, because we don't have all those emissions from mowing and weed eating, as well as the rest of it. So I think it meets the existing statute just as the Oriet met this particular thing.
Thank you. Questions for Jane?
So when they prepared the site for construction, all of the existing materials had to be demolished and hauled off, and then probably all the soil and existing native materials were taken off-site as well, correct?
Not all of them. There are some trees that are still there.
Right, but I mean, anything that was on the ground?
Right.
It was either pavement that was demolished, parking lot pavement, buildings, and then any green space that was there was probably cleared.
I believe that's correct. Yes.
So you basically scarred the earth, started again, and built the place?
Correct.
Yes.
Go back to the vote, the way you see that the Planning Commission voted and the language that you presented there.
I've got those minutes here, if that would be helpful.
I've got those. What's your interpretation?
The text amendment that was before the Planning Commission was the text amendment to allow synthetic turf as a matter of right as part of the landscaping. When the commission first met in June, they asked the staff to tell them what would be involved with alternative compliance, what would be involved with prohibition entirely. And so the staff came back and told them those things. But the only vote that was taken was on the text amendment that the City Commission had initiated on the recommendation of the staff. There was no vote taken as to alternative compliance, no vote taken as to complete prohibition, but a lot of discussion about the fact that alternative compliance seemed like a reasonable solution. And so what's before you, I think, is a modification of their vote to allow this as alternative compliance.
Thank you.
I guess I could just chime in on that and just say I was on the commission for that vote, and that's what it was about. Scott, you would agree with that?
Well, I think before them were some options to determine whether or not the Planning Commission wanted to pursue either outright prohibitions, clarify the code, seek alternative compliance, or leave the code as is. So yes, the issue before them was, the vote actually was to leave the code as is with some of the language that Mary presented to you in the beginning of the PowerPoint. And I think in some manner, leave it up to the planning staff to look at issues like the Oriet Hotel... to look at issues like the Oriad Hotel, which was approved in very limited fashion. That was a big part of that discussion that evening as well, as I recall.
In fact, I think I'd specifically ask Scott, that was you, would you stand by that decision?
Right.
And then I was comfortable with you. I would prefer that we make, be able to make, have some leeway to make those kind of decisions. So it wasn't the intent of the group to say, no, you know, we didn't want to go down this road of alternative compliance at all. It was a matter of my right.
I think some commissioners believed that there was discretion at the administrative level to look at projects like the Oriad Hotel and make a determination, even with the language that apparently is, or appears clear to me, to prohibit synthetic and artificial plants. In hindsight, do we go above our authority to approve the Oriad? Perhaps. But we did it. We think, I do stand by the logic and reasoning behind that approval. I think it works in that kind of infill, very small lot, very narrow strips type of development. And then, but there was also a lot of discussion that what's at Tuckaway at Frontier is a completely different fact set in terms of its scope and level of use at that site. So I believe that was all part of the discussion.
But if I understood right, excuse me, Jane. If I understood right, that at the Oriad Hotel, that the use of the synthetic material was 7% of that site? Is that the figure?
6.6%.
6.6%?
We haven't, I don't think we studied that. I trust Jane's numbers.
No, 6.6 was what you had for Frontier.
That's what you have for Frontier, but it was-
I'm sorry, 8.5 at the Oriad.
So 8.5%, so maybe limited use by definition somewhere, but.
Right. It was limiting the fact that they had, that the Oriad complied and had, but part of the logic in approving Oriad was the overabundance of landscape materials in the planting beds adjacent to the hotel. And at the time, frankly, we were trying to get occupancy in that building. And so we looked at it pretty liberally and looked at the project and decided that that was appropriate use of the landscape material because there was an abundance of the shrubs and the trees and the design itself.
It's kind of interesting when you look at those two sets of numbers. You've got, the Oriad is about a tenth of the size of Frontier with about, proportionately more synthetic turf. And a little bit more landscaping.
Mayor, I think that's perhaps the distinction is that even though the percentages are the same, the actual sheer number, amount of synthetic turf at the Oriad is substantially less than what's at Frontier.
Questions for Jane? Thank you, Jane.
Thank you. I apologize for going over the minutes. I didn't realize you had five minutes.
Thank you. Public comment?
Hi, I'm Gary Ziegler. I actually live in that neighborhood. I've lived there about seven years. I live on Wagon Wheel Road. And the way that I go in and out every day is I go right down Frontier. And prior to this development, the boardwalk was rather an eyesore, to say the least. It actually detracted from our neighborhood. And what I have seen in the improvements with, and I'm not just going to limit to artificial turf here. It's just a beautiful landscape in general. They, I see people on that all the time. They maintain it. The whole property has really enhanced our neighborhood. And as far as I'm concerned, the artificial turf itself is actually a very natural and beautiful looking product. Now, it's kind of odd to see that in the middle of winter when everything else is gray and kind of taupe, but it's kind of a nice sunny spot at least every morning and afternoon of my day when I go by. So I've actually felt that the product has been a real asset to our neighborhood. And I would like at least that to be in consideration here, that I would, I personally would love it if my neighbor who has real grass would take half the care of his lawn that they do there. It would be a much finer place. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Brett Hemel. And I'm actually a resident at Frontier. And the turf was actually one of the determining factors. I'm new to Lawrence, Kansas, about six months for my wife and I. I have a son who's 11, who has allergies and asthmatic allergies. He uses that turf daily. I don't know about the studies of the heat and this and that and the other, but I can tell you he was out there all summer playing on it. And when I told him I was coming to this meeting tonight, one of the things he said was, "Well, Dad, tell him I don't get chickers when I play in the grass." So we love it. First summer, I haven't had any issues with grass in my son. So it's excellent. My family couldn't be happier with it, so thank you.
Basically, to continue on the same thing, I'm Patrick Kestner. I live right off of Frontier Road as well. And basically, after living in Lawrence for five years and then moving out to Scottsdale and coming back, it's nice to live next to an apartment complex that actually looks clean. You know, the grass or turf, if you want to call it, is much better than most college campuses and around the area. Most students just trash it, all of the above. This is much easier to maintain and make, looks much, much better and short and sweet to that point.
My name is Gwen Klingenberg. I'm the president of the Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods. First of all, I don't really know to how, Scott's ability to how far he can ignore code, but he has always stated that it was for one specific area that was very unique. Frontier is not unique. And it's 100%, not 10%. And I really feel that the 10%, when you're talking about the whole entire area, will allow just about anybody and everybody to do 100% artificial turf on their landscaping, as Frontier has done. It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful place. The old buildings, I actually used to live there. They were shabby. But you know what? The apartments on Stewart Avenue, they have real grass and it looks good in the summer. So Frontier could have done the same thing. Now, I understand that it's cheaper to put in. But the problem is, after the applicant sells the property on, the maintenance costs and replacement costs will make it far more expensive. I don't want to have to go into the heat islands, the soil damage, the runoff because staff's already done that. I think one of my biggest concerns is the request from the applicant that no matter what's decided here tonight, if alternative compliance is allowed, that they be grandfathered. They caused a violation. What started this was a violation of codes. Now, Landis had a meeting with staff about our concerns about code enforcement and how we've been handling this. This is a violation. Now, the applicant is waving their magic and trying to explain to you why they should be allowed because they did it at the Oriad and now all of a sudden Frontier, which is flat and big areas, not small strips, are full of artificial turf. I also would like to request that the City Commission seriously consider the residential use. I believe there has been a statement in the paper, and I've talked to Scott today, about residential use on Louisiana, which was allowed because we don't say you can't. We don't say you can, but we don't say you can't. And I think in residential, this would be a very bad place to have it. Do my time. Actually, I think I have most of this that I wanted to say. I just wanted to remind you that the Planning Commission did deny it. The staff's original plan, they said, they asked for denial. And the only reason that I've been hearing that they're coming here with language for you is because you've asked for some language because there was some confusion as just to what we were talking about. But I still think that denial is absolutely the only way to go. If we are allowed through the way it's been done for the Oriad, through some kind of alternative compliance, 10% is an outrageous number. And it needs to follow some of the difficulties that were discussed and not just be able to put out and laid out. And so I'm hoping that you'll deny this because we already have the ability through Scott. Thank you.
Gwen, a quick point before you sit down. I think both sides have agreed and everything I've read is that it's much more expensive initially to install the artificial, synthetic turf.
When it was first brought, yeah.
The real benefits would be probably from who inherits the property later because it takes time to pay for itself, but then over time it does.
I just know that in several of the papers, when it was first brought up, the discussion was how it was much cheaper. So I wanted to make sure-
Just an assumption.
-that if that's the reason, that we need to make, take that in consideration. Thank you.
Public comment?
My name is Dan Danenberg. I reside at 2702 University Drive. I live right across the street from a large apartment complex. And I can see the day, probably tomorrow morning, where the shovels will come out and the natural turf will be ripped up and down goes the artificial surface. Because that's going to happen under what we're doing here. The 8.5% they point out soon will be 18.5%. Then 36.5%, then 47.5%. We will have regulatory creep here of monumental proportions and soon, almost every development in the city of Lawrence will be artificial turf. There's no substitute for a natural grass or plantings. I have that on my yard. It has worked out very well. And to allow, I really don't have the solid scientific information I should have, but we need to preserve the natural flora and fauna of this city. Artificial surfaces don't belong in developments. They ultimately may look nice. I don't know how grass looked green in the, in January, but it does, in the apartment complex right across the street from me, it's natural grass and it looks green. It looks nice. But as I say, it'll probably be one day, pretty soon, all gone and we'll have a natural service there, a synthetic service there. The other thing that concerns me is access by applicants or developers on this issue. We heard the representative for one developer, or one of the developers, refer to the planner in charge, I guess, as Mary. Evidently, they're on a first-name basis. They have such a close working relationship. I think there needs to be some provision to balance the applicant input with other citizen input. And I don't think this forum alone is sufficient for that. And when we have an applicant's representative who goes before this body and uses the questioning period, in essence, to extend their time of presentation, that is not acceptable. And I think we need some way to balance these interests and we don't have that balance now. We have a balance that is frankly slanted and tilted. And then my final comment is, please do not approve the use of synthetic turfs in the development, either residential or commercial in this city. Thank you.
Public comment?
Hi, I'm Leslie, Leslie Soden. I'm not speaking on behalf of the board because frankly, if I took this to my board, they would probably laugh at me hysterically. If I was like, "What do we think about synthetic turf?" They'd be like, "I don't know, Leslie, what do you think?" And that would be the end of that vote. So I'm just going to say, I mean, we're supposed to be this environmentally conscious town, so the idea of slathering things with plastic is repellent. Thank you.
Further public comment? Leslie, you're always so concise too. I appreciate it. You know exactly.
I doubled my time from that side.
That's pretty good. It's like the email we had from Mr. Heckler. No further public comment, correct? Back to the commission, questions?
I have a question for staff. Has to do with the same subject that I asked the applicant's attorney. The contrast between the Frontier's apartment and the hotel, in one, in the hotel instance, there certainly is some very difficult spots to landscape and therefore, we end up with some appropriate use of artificial turf. The applicant makes the case that the same types of, some of the same types of instances occur at the Frontier and therefore, it should be considered to be under the alternative category in terms of landscaping. I'd be interested in either one of your responses.
Well, I can speak a little bit to it. It's just that we perceive them to be two completely different projects and when confronted with the issue before us of the compliance matter about using turf at Frontier, we didn't accept an application for alternative compliance there. We understood and after reviewing the code and making the distinguishing, distinguishing between Oriad and Frontier that we could not administratively approve alternative compliance at Tuckaway at Frontier. So we saw them as just two completely different types of projects. And so then we began discussions about avenues to seek relief from the, from the code that seemed to prohibit the use of synthetic turf on that kind of scale. I don't know if I'm answering your question, Vice Mayor.
That's helpful, but the two physical sites, do you regard those as two quite different physical sites?
Certainly. Oriad is on a steep hill, steep incline. Its use was in narrow strips, almost as in borders, border strips to planting boxes that had abundant trees and shrubs contained within them. This, Frontier is more of wide open yards with entirely different dimensions, larger dimensions, if you will. It had portions of it that, between a building and sidewalk, for instance, that perhaps could be, could employ the benefits of synthetic turf, in our opinion. But on a larger scale, we do site planning every day, every month, every year that employs some of the native plantings and conventional plantings, if you will, for those same types of areas.
Scott, you know, I appreciate all the documentation in this report. I guess I'm, this thing that concerns me the most is, why did we fill this report with comments, scientific documentation and data regarding rubber crumb infill turf when, you know, we're specifically talking about a whole nother type of material? From the heat effect, from the carcinogenic effect, from the albedo, all those things. Why did we give us this information, which can definitely impact me and my decisions? But I also know from previous conversations that this isn't the same kind of turf we're talking about. We're just, I mean, it's not, it doesn't seem reasonable to use documentation and test data relative to- test data relative to a completely different product made up of, you know, ground up tires. I guess, I guess I'm not sure, I understand why we would put that in there if it was not really applicable.
And Commissioner Endeavor, you've probably seen the entirety of the information from when we started with the Planning Commission earlier last summer, because this really was sort of a research project for us. We had to come up to speed and research and analyze every bit of synthetic turf because it wasn't something that we had been necessarily presented with the issue in terms of a code amendment.
Sure.
So it has been an evolution, a process for us to bring ourselves up to speed, try to educate the commissions as to what's out there. We learned a lot about, from, from the applicant about the evolution of turf and the turf industry and what, how it began and where it is today. And so we have, Ms. Miller has used the experts in the field to determine what our use standard should be, and that's what we're recommending be employed if, if adopted tonight.
Use standard, define that.
The use, the different, the use standards about the quality of the turf, the product type, what type of fill materials, those sorts of things. So we may have.
But it specifically does not allow the rubber crumb infill type, correct?
Right, it only allows sand.
Right, okay. So we're not even, so, so I guess, you know, I read scientific documents all the time. And I read this and, you know, my alarm goes off of all the environmental impacts of this material, and I appreciate you guys doing this because it's, it's pretty clear that, you know, there's, you know, a lot of inappropriate things that come about from using this material. But we're writing rules that are specifically going to exclude this entire class of turf in our city. But yet, our documentation and even as much as today, we're talking about a product and the heat, and, and the heat values of a product that we're not even going to allow in our city or use. So I guess I want to make sure I understand where, you know, if there is any data, I'd like to see it. If there's not, then, then I want to probably get that.
As far as discussing rubber tired infill, that type of infill does exist. When we started researching this, should be allowed synthetic turf, we weren't looking at a specific product. No one came and said, check into the text amendment for artificial turf of certain types.
Sure.
So we looked at everything about artificial turf. It's not something we've studied before. So we looked at all different types of turf. And I believe when we looked at the rubber issue, we looked at the EPA and the fact that they issued health advisories and took that as a responsible item to.
Sure.
Report on. Now, as far as the heat index, that is not tied to rubber infill at all. The artificial turf industry admits it is their, their filaments, the glass blades. It's something about the pigment or the chemical makeup of the grass blades themselves. So even the turf that we're proposing, without the rubber infill, because that has nothing to do with heat, will still have those higher heat ratios.
Okay, so.
It's two different.
So they've, because I read all this, and I guess I missed that part, because, you know, being that they're made, that they're black and that the, you know, and that the black surface is exposed.
It's not exposed. It's inside, but.
But it's exposed. Trust me, I see it all the time and, you know, I, I'm not arguing with you, but it's laying on top because they fill it in all the time. It's constantly added material. So it may initially be laying low, but the material ends up being brought to the surface by use.
Right. I would need to find the information I found on, that it actually is the grass blades. And Mr. DiGeronimo, I discussed it with him as well, and he said they still have that problem with it being heat. That's an accepted issue. He recommends that you water, for instance, our athletic fields get so hot, they recommend that you water them if you're going to have athletes on them, and they don't have the rubber crumb infill.
Who doesn't?
The synthetic turf on our football fields. They recommend that you water those, even if they don't have the rubber crumb infill.
Okay, because those are rubber.
Because they get so hot.
They do have rubber crumbs on, on the, on the fields.
I don't believe that all athletic fields do. I could be wrong on that. Perhaps all athletic fields do, but.
On this one, too. I was out there in the fall. It was, it was like 90 degrees. You know, I didn't have my infrared thermometer with me, but actually, when I was there, I wished I'd brought it, because it just, it just wasn't as hot. I just, I think we're lacking that data. I don't believe that the data, the data that were presented, I agree with you, Commissioner. We have in excess, I think, of, I mean, there's hundreds and hundreds of pages here. And it's a comprehensive review of, you know, of some of these things, some of these issues, but maybe not associated with what we're trying to talk about. I understand that your, the focus was broad.
Right, and so the introductory materials.
Sitting in my chair, though, you know, when we try to review all this, we have to, you know, we have to narrow it down at some point. And it is a, you know, it is a concern.
If that was an issue you wanted us to look into further, I could research specifically the heat effect of synthetic turf.
Well, I just asked because I wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something, because I kept reading, you know, I read all this stuff and then read it again, and I think this one is 214 pages of mostly technical data. And so I'm okay reading that, but that was the original staff report, and I want to make sure that I understand that we're not even talking about allowing that, because I wouldn't want it anywhere near, you know, my kids and the fact that both school districts have it. And use that type is not a disrespect, but, but that it is a product that is completely different from an environmental standpoint. Not, not to argue with the heat point, because I have no idea. But, but that's one thing I was trying to figure out is, is where, you know, where, because we use the heat as a reason to add also add landscaping, too, and I think that's important. And, and, you know, because they're all tied together. So I want to make sure that there's a clear understanding as to what we're, you know, going to allow and that the ideas regarding environmental impact contamination off, you know, any kind of runoff or any kind of issues regarding the rubber infill turf is, doesn't apply here, because we're not going to, it's not even on the table. And that's, that's everybody's understanding, right?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Question? Sure. Scott, when, on Jane's recommended changes to the 20, let's just start with 20-1007. I know we'd had a conversation on number two there about the, putting it in for you to make these determinations. She's actually got those slashed out, and the more I, I look at it, actually, looking at a lot of these, I see where they really simplify this code. Can I get your thoughts on these individual changes?
Sure. We believe that the language that we presented to you for adoption speaks to the direction we received in September by the commission to make it limited in scope. And we believe that this 1007-2 helps frame what that means for us to be able to analyze a request for alternative compliance. It was most helpful for us to frame the issues and think about the future applications and requests in order to say, you know, we have, we believe we have to have something more than what we have in 1007-1 for synthetic turf. Saw it as a unique product that we would be asked to, to make these kinds of decisions on.
I guess, I'm curious, if we're saying, we're going to get specific about the square, if you meet number one, for whatever reason, and we have a specific limit as far as what percentage of the site could, this could entail, haven't we, have we captured that already? That limited use?
I think they're talking about two different things. I think we're speaking to, you know, as we interpreted the commission's direction to be limited in nature, I believe we interpreted to mean in limited areas as well, to not allow sort of the wide open yards, not a field of synthetic turf, but in applications where it's maybe heavy foot traffic or these narrow areas between sidewalk and building. If that's, if that was misguided on our part, that's part of the discussion I believe we like to hear about tonight.
I think one of the things that gets a little bit in the way of this decision is the, we're really not talking about the existing property. We're talking about writing something for our code. So for me, I try and just forget that, what else is out there and how it applies, but as much as how do we write something that's manageable going forward? So I don't want to write something specifically to address that property per se, if it's not something we're going to be good with, you know, and easily applied going forward.
How'd we come up with the permeability ratings? Is that something from the standard?
Thank you, Mr. DiGeronimo.
Okay, thank you.
See some other, I guess, just going on through some of the, the other changes in here, recommended. I think where, where it says per manufacturer specification probably makes sense, but not step too far ahead there. Procedure, one I here. I think it was the next change that was listed as information establishing the unsuitability of the area for the establishment and maintenance of living vegetation.
Right. We, we believed that the commission's direction was that it was presumed that the more natural organic materials would be used unless it could be shown through justification by, by an applicant that it wasn't suitable for living material. And that speaks to that issue.
Okay, following, just following up on this. It's all right. I kind of want to roll through some of these changes. The Board of Zoning Appeals, as far as appeals to the, for decisions from the planning director going to the City Commission versus Board of Zoning Appeals. Jane's comment and chart that she put up there, can you help clarify what's?
Yeah. Site, request for alternative compliance is a sort of subset of a site plan request, so that if they, if an applicant doesn't meet the buffer yards, parking lot landscaping, perimeter landscaping, or for good cause, doesn't, doesn't desire to meet it, they can also submit a request through that site planning process for alternative compliance. And we sort of analyze that separate in addition to the site plan request. And currently, the code says that appeals of any decisions from the administrative decision on alternative compliance go to the BZA. We have talked a lot about this, Mary and I have, and, and we don't necessarily have a strong opinion about whether appeals go to the City Commission or BZA. We just don't want one form of alternative compliance for synthetic turf to go to one body and all other forms of alternative compliance to go to another body. So that if you have an opinion or a decision on whether appeals from that alternative compliance decision go to BZA or City Commission, we'd like all appeals to all types of alternative compliance to go to one board, not.
Can I just ask why? Because my first thought would be that if we were doing this, you know, I don't anticipate if, because of the expense and whatnot of this, that this being something that just starts rolling out everywhere. But at the same time, you know, perhaps it, it's not a bad idea for us to see those exceptions and those arguments and help get a feel for it. I don't know that, what would be the issue of just allowing this to come to us versus saying it's everything or nothing that comes to the commission?
Well, again, I just think it's, it's procedurally should be as efficient as possible. So you may have an application where they have two different, that the alternative compliance has an element of synthetic turf use and an element of buffer yard or perimeter landscaping. And if we can agree on both of those issues, one would go to the BZA, one would go to the City Commission.
I see.
And so we, we would just prefer a more efficient process.
Okay.
Your argument on the other side of that is, I guess, anything else having to do with the site plan comes here versus the BZA?
Right, typically, yeah. I mean, we, and this hasn't been an issue really, because we have always worked out alternative compliance and haven't had to use the BZA for appeals. So it's, again, it's one of those elements of the 2006 code that we haven't had a lot of, of practice with in that regard. So we haven't identified it as a code issue. This is helping to identify it as maybe a process issue that we could, that we could adjust right now.
So normally, the, you know, we haven't been sending stuff to the BZA. I mean, it just, it hasn't been wired.
Right. There hasn't been an appeal to an administrative decision on alternative compliance. We have either, typically, we either work through the alternative compliance with the applicant and/or neighborhood, or if they, if it's something we can't approve through alternative compliance, we might encourage them to seek a variance to the, to the landscaping criteria, which is another avenue, and that goes to the BZA. And I think that's why it exists today in that fashion, because it's, it's almost a type of variance that the BZA would see otherwise if staff didn't see it. So if we were to deny an alternative compliance request, there, there are two avenues to seek relief is through appealing that to the BZA or seeking a variance to the BZA. If we change it, their avenues would be to seek a variance, separate from alternative compliance, or bring it, the appeal of that to the City Commission.
So they'd have their choice of bodies?
Well, they would have the choice to seek a variance or appeal an administrative decision.
Okay, can I have one more question to make sure I understand? Your alternate compliance currently, the language, so I want to build, I want to do this site, and, you know, I noticed that the site, they used quite a bit of rock and kind of smaller pebble islands and berms surrounded by some synthetic turf. If they wanted to, they could have come and according to the rule as it stands today, they could have gone in and put in like all earth and berms with rock on it, the way it looks now. Or rock surrounding it instead of grass, pavers, all the language that's in here right now that would all have been acceptable. Or would the fact they're not using any turf at all kick them out from a review? Or how, I mean, how would that, how would that inspire?
That's a good question. It, it's a little bit of, of analysis of what's impervious versus pervious. So pavers wouldn't necessarily be a landscape material, it could be a landscape material up to a certain point.
Well, because it's listed as landscape material in our definition right now.
Right, right.
With pavers.
Up to a certain point where it would, because, because certain pavers are pervious, some are impervious, as, as I know you're aware. And depending on which type they use, they, it's not the notion of that you have to have a certain amount of turf.
Okay.
At the property.
So that was never really an issue? I mean, we don't make people put turf in. Or to, to kind of finalize the site or to clean it up, we're not going to dictate, we haven't dictated that people use turf, living turf or otherwise, as a landscape material.
It's that when it is used, it is a grass.
Organic, yeah, yeah. Or this one's, okay, so grasses, turf grasses. Okay, so in the event, okay, so just to bring this one step further, make sure I understand, somebody doesn't, so we say we don't approve synthetic turf, either as a variance or as a code here. Somebody could still come in and not use a lick of grass, turf whatsoever, use impervious surfaces, and would you, do you calculate how much runoff is going to occur based on the materials that they're planning on using?
Yes, we calculate the amount of impervious material, and there's, as Mary had showed, they say that's 80% of a site can be impervious. So you could use pavers as landscape material up to the point where you reach that level, and then you would have to use other types of landscape material that are pervious.
How about those big berms with rocks and all sorts of impermeable material? Is that considered impervious or is that permeable?
That, well, depending on how it's designed, would, could be pervious.
Okay.
Could be pervious and accepted as a code compliant landscape material.
You can put rocks in the, in the island of a parking lot?
Well, in conjunction with trees and shrubs per our code, right.
I see it, yeah. She was mentioning that that's hot, too, and I agree. It's really not helping with the heat island, but.
If you've got a big tree over it, then obviously.
So the tree mitigates the effect of the rock in the, in the island? Is that what we're, I mean, is that what we, how we look at it now?
Well, the concept, of course, is that the tree provides the canopy, which helps reduce the heat island effect of the entire land, the, the black asphalt. So yes, certainly there are going to be better materials for that in the island itself, but the, the notion is that the tree canopy, it's really about the health of the tree as well. I know that Mary had conversations with Crystal Miles this past week, and her recommendation, it will always be to use the lowest level of heat material in parking lot islands. Otherwise, the heat bounces up and it actually starts diminishing the health of the tree that's meant to help cool the parking lot.
This is very, very interesting.
So again.
More than you ever wanted to know.
So again, Scott, we don't, we don't tell people that, well, if you're going to have grass, it's got to be natural, and you don't have to have it, is that right?
Under current code, correct. Yeah, there's no required percentage of natural grass on any given site. There's required, there's, there's pervious and pervious standards, and then there are requirements for trees and shrubs, depending on whether we're talking about perimeter landscaping, parking lot islands, buffer yards and the like.
Okay, can I have one more thing, please? Okay, so embellish me here. I got turf, it all dies. Or I just. Or I decide to use natural landscaping and I put in some buffalo grass and it dies. And so I've got clay, hardpan soil, water runs right off of it. What do we do to fix that problem?
Well, as, the site plan is our enforcement tool for ensuring that those landscape materials are living. It becomes, it becomes an enforcement measure.
But I remember we had a lot of problem with people not watering these areas, stuff dying off, and we end up with an enforcement issue to deal with.
Yes.
And we have what sort of power to enforce them to keep that stuff alive?
Well, through our site planning notes and the code that requires to, for it to be maintained in a healthy state, it becomes an enforcement matter that, that we do have cases of enforcement on site planned properties. Whether it be trees, shrubs, or turf.
Okay, very good, thank you.
It's mostly complaint driven?
It is complaint driven for the most part. Sometime, actually, most of the time, it is triggered by a new site plan application so that they want to do a change of use or in addition to a building. We will actually go out and inspect the site and come back and say, "Well, three trees have died, three street trees, so replace the street trees and the shrubs have, have died." And so it's kind of a continuous review throughout the years.
Yes. Okay, I'm still picking up on this, these changes here, recommended changes. Twenty dash two thousand eleven, synthetic turf standards. As far as this ratio, ratio goes, the, all the example, what you gave here, we've seen the comparison, so at least the current uses have far exceeded that. I, I think I'd be okay with leaving that in there, probably in both cases. But as we go on down then, twenty dash two, two thousand eleven installation, changing that to according to manufacturer specifications, I assume that would be okay?
This speaks a little bit to the heart, or to the matter of whether it's pervious or not. And from our perspective, if there's a minimum of two-inch compacted gravel comparable material, it's gonna allow it to seep into the ground, it's gonna, it's gonna create that, that under, that level underneath the turf so it, so the water will seep into the ground underneath. As I understand, Frontier was installed, it was sort of hardpanned soil, and then the turf overlaid. And I think in that kind of installation, we would have to have some further discussions with the stormwater engineer to understand whether we have a pervious or impervious surface so that we can address stormwater issues. And I'm not, I'm not sure there's a dis, I apologize Commissioner Amick. I'm not sure there's a disconnect between the ability to install according to the manufacturer's specifications over gravel. I think that Ms. Eldridge would, would debate that with us, that somehow that might void a warranty or something. I think that's, needs to be further explored cause that's an important element of the stormwater management for a site.
Do you have more, are you going through the list?
Probably a little more detail than needed in, in, under maintenance replacement enforcement to specify whether you can do fruits, nuts, heavily flowering bushes, that sort of thing. I think, you know, people need, we're saying you need to maintain it. Do we, I'm sorry, do we need to clarify?
No, Jane is pointing out that on page three, number two above, the very first number two, that there's a requirement that the turf shall be, have a permeable backing. And that's an important requirement as well. But we, I mean, we believe there's more to the permeable, permeation of water that if you have a permeable backing that's hitting a hardpan surface underneath, you're still going to have significant runoff from that. There has to be something that allows that water to seep in at a rate that, that's actually being absorbed and not creating runoff issues and exacerbating stormwater issues on a site.
Okay. Page four, I was just starting to say that I think we might be a little too, a little, a little more detailed than what we need. We're saying they have to maintain these things. But do we need to tell, to get to the specifics of saying that you can't have bird feeders, fruits, nut trees, heavily flowering plants, et cetera?
This speaks to the, the research performed that showed that though, these types of things can create bacteria on turf if not washed off and not maintained appropriately. So that when we go through a site plan review and we see, because we, we get to review the types of trees and make recommendations and even require certain things, that if we see a fruit, nut tree, for example, in a turf area, then we would have a requirement that says, "No", that, that's going to create a problem in this area and have other types of species over turf areas.
Would it be worse than, than oversawed?
Well, if.
I found all this on the ASGI, the Artificial, or the Association of Synthetic Grass Installers website. They have maintenance rec, tips. And they recommend that you do not put bird feeders or anything that's gonna put a lot of flowers or fruit onto the turf because as it decays, it creates sugars. And they listed different ways you should maintain your turf, you know, that you should rake it and the different kind of ways you should maintain it, and you should sprinkler it to wash off the sugars. I had that in an earlier draft. I'd listed the specific maintenance steps they said to take. But when we talked to the applicant, they thought that was more than was needed. So I wanted to include this. It's a warning, cause it says it should not be located. It doesn't say that you may not. But it just warns people that are doing this perhaps don't know, they haven't looked at the website, that we would recommend not putting these trees here. If they wanna put them here, there may be a note stating, you know, the presence of these trees may require additional maintenance for this, the turf, just as a notification to the property owner.
That's, that's still would maintain that. You'd wanna say that to anyone putting a, putting that over sawed as well, or any grass? When, when fruits break, when fruits break down, it's bacteria that's doing it.
Right, and for some reason, it was a specific concern for the turf, you know? And it's not just fruit, it's the, the flowers and the leaves, the certain types of things that come off of the plants.
Well, I think, you know, just recommending that they follow the manufacturer's recommendations some, might be sufficient to us going out and getting too, too detailed on all this. But, I mean, I don't, I don't know what kind of resources we've spent on this already at this point. But it makes it harder and harder for this group to approve things, the more micromanaging, I guess, we get, or the more detail that we find in here, tougher it is to, to approve it, I think. So keeping it simple is, is better. But then at Planning Director, item, well, okay, we're going to item three, synthetic turf approved with alternative clients, subject to periodic inspection by the Planning Director. Is it, so you're, this and number four are both saying that, Scott, your, you, your position specifically would be inspecting, doesn't say exactly how often, but.
Right, this, this came out of, again, that some discussions in September where the commission wanted to see a, an, a, a maintenance enforcement part of the code that ensured that these things would be maintained in a, in a well-kept lawn type of appearance. And this is, this is a challenge of this frankly, because how much it fades, different areas are gonna fade, it may be torn or, or ripped in certain instances through whatever means there are. It, it, we took the direction that we needed some language in here that said that periodic could be complaint based, it could be annual, it could be upon review of another site plan, like we talked about previously. But in any event, it gives us the ability to point to other parts of this recommended code that talk about appearance and, and warranty and fade and such, and would be able to put them on notice that they needed to, to correct the violation.
We have, do we, who would that fall under now, that type of inspection?
It would typically be code enforcement, Brian Jimenez's group. They would inspect, bring back the, the facts, and we would discuss them and, and figure out where to go from there.
And I guess the last one I'd ask your thoughts on is landscaping, the, the last paragraph in item four, combination of the changes recommended right there in the first two sentences.
Right, and I believe the, the recommendation is to strike the words in limited applications, the use of synthetic turf, and just go with synthetic turf maybe permitted as part of a landscaping plan through alternative compliance.
On the first two sentences there, the?
That, I think, I believe those are, that, those are our recommendations, yeah.
Thanks. Okay. Scott on that?
Well, I would just point out, Commissioner Carter, that section twenty dash twenty twelve is the applicant's new language about all synthetic turf installed prior to the effective date of section twenty twenty eleven shall be deemed approved, which shall be subject to the provisions of section twenty dash twenty eleven C. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, that's, that's not recommended language in, in our packet. That's recommended if you accept the applicant's recommended concept to effectively grandfather Frontier Apartments.
Okay, so can I ask one question then?
You said it was one more last time.
Well, he, you just brought, he, he brought up another one that, that makes sense here. So we're talking about the Planning Director having the authority to inspect or to assess whether or not this installation is being maintained or needs to be replaced. We did tell you, we, we, we did advise that that was important, cause this is new and kind of untried. Why don't we have that same language in our existing landscaping code? And, you know, we talked about it's complaint driven, but, or is it already in there, we're just?
It is.
So why do we need to reiterate it if it's already implicit?
Well, the, really, just because we interpreted the, the previous direction to highlight it in the code that it would be, that it would be, I mean, it's a little bit different animal than going out and, and replacing a tree. We're talking about significant work to replace the scope and level of something like the, the tuckaway apartments. So we, we thought it needed to be treated a little bit uniquely.
Cause of the cost and?
Because of the cost, because it would take a little bit of prep time to, to ramp up and, and budget in that kind of replacement schedule. And that was the reasoning behind it. It, it, it effectively really is no different than the way we enforce site plans today.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, that I wanna make sure that I was clear that that was kinda, we're not making some new rule, we're just clarifying what is already kind of our policy to begin with.
Right.
At our direction, at our direction.
It's very much in alignment with the way we would enforce any landscape violation or compliance matter.
Wasn't just put it down and not worry about it.
Right.
It needs to be taken care of.
And, and really, either one of these options get at that issue. I think we're just wordsmithing the concepts at that point on this particular issue.
This is a fun one, sir.
Hugh, you brought up a point a second ago, a little while ago about, it, it's hard to write an amendment for the entire city when we know that there is a location, you know, that this already exists on. Is, is this language that we have before us not just taking care of the one, the one particular project that we have that already exists?
No, I think.
The one that came, that brought all this to light.
Right. You mean, is, that's what's prompted this?
Yeah.
Yes. But is it being written to address going forward, or is it being written to address this property? Is that what you're asking me?
Well, I, I guess what I'm saying is, is as I look at this thing, and, you know, I've been out on that side enough right now to know, you know, is, is it an appropriate use of, of the synthetic turf on that piece of property? I think it probably is. And I mean, I just gotta say that. You know, the, the big thing is, is if we're going to take and write, you know, an, an amendment that is gonna affect every piece of property in Lawrence, Kansas that will fall under this thing, let's do it, you know, in such a way that we're not picking and choosing from a list on a Tuesday night and not realizing, you know, what it's gonna mean to everybody, you know, in this community. I mean, Dan, I'm sorry, I, I'll single you out. You make a very good point. You know, you're afraid that it may, you know, your neighbor across the street that, you know, has a large piece of property, it may start a development there, you know, of, of this kind of synthetic turf. Is it appropriate to be used on that piece of property? I don't know. But as we pick out everything that we're trying to put in, in a text amendment tonight, I, I, I'm not sure that this is quite the way that we should do this thing. But, you know, the, the one site that we are talking about, it looks good. I, I don't know. I don't know what we're afraid of. Maybe, maybe we look at that as the test place. And, and, you know, we go out and look at it every year for the next couple of years and figure out, is there too much drainage and runoff of the property? Is it, you know, bleaching out or whatever it's gonna do from the sun? Are we having some kind of, you know, effect into the atmosphere because of that synthetic stuff being there? I mean, I don't know every part of this thing, but that's what we're talking about. I don't see any of us, maybe, maybe I'm missing something here, but I don't see any of us telling, you know, the owner of that property to dig, dig that turf up at this point. I just don't see it, unless somebody, you know, is not saying it. But I think, you know, the one thing that we.
I don't think we've gotten around to that yet.
What?
Okay. I mean, I, we've talked about the text. I mean, there's two, to me, there's a couple of issues here. One is all the text changes, and then what do we do with Frontier property? I mean, I, I think there's two, right, two different things.
You're right, you're right.
So I, I'm.
It is easier to separate that out and not try, I, I agree.
I think, I think what you do is you either grandfather him in, or you say, "Yeah, it's okay", and get a vote yes or no, and then you go on about the text changes. And you, we can finish the text changes tonight, or if we're not happy with them or need more information, we can ask staff for more information. Plus, I'm missing the whole deal here tonight. That's, that's what boils down to.
Yep, no, I agree. We, if we try and, yeah, if we can separate the two issues, then we're, our text amendment will be, I think, a better, a better one probably. And, and it's, it is enough detail here, and I, I think there's some good merit to the changes that have been recommended. And, you know, I think anytime we do it, the more we can simplify it, probably the better for, for us, for enforcement, et cetera, for people really understanding what, what their expectations are. So I don't know how we go about doing that. Not in a huge rush to, to get this text amendment fixed tonight with the amount of things in here that I'd like to see maybe massaged a little. But perhaps there's a, a way we can deal with the, the tuckaway thing separately. And I don't, I don't know if that needs to be a separate time, or if we clarify that tonight.
I think, I mean, I think.
I think you do the Frontier thing tonight. You either do it or you don't. I mean, it's either, it's either gonna stay or it's gonna go away. If it stays, it sets a precedent. If it goes away, then you've respected the existing codes that were on the books at the time. So that's kinda where we're at.
And I do like what Commissioner Amick's mentioned too. I mean, as far as precedent, we're still, though, being a new thing, it's kind of a test case as well, because, I mean, we, we haven't done it. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of fear out there, and there's a lot of things, even stuff that I know Mary's carried forward from previous reports and whatnot. I think to really get to this, there's a lot of that that should probably just be taken out now that we've discovered that that's not necessarily pertinent to the product we're talking about here. You know, but I don't know as far as precedent. I know it's one thing, but it doesn't mean we have to keep doing that, right? We're still gonna, this is where we're gonna set policy going forward with this, with this text amendment. Yeah.
Well, let me continue then. For me, I'm not against artificial turf. I think the, or yet it's a very appropriate use. I do believe it was probably administered well, and it's, it's a fine end product. I, I do see a vast difference between the two properties, and I do see that Frontier could have been landscaped with. with traditional landscaping materials. And that's just the way I call it. I went out, looked around, walked around, and it's very, very nice. But still, I think that it probably could have been handled under the existing codes in a regular fashion. And so, I'm not going to vote in favor of it.
So, you're preferring it's pulled up then? That's what you're saying over time, it's the text amendment again?
I'm talking about Frontier Apartments, whether the turf stays or not. And then go back to the text amendments at a later time or after we get done with this, disposing of the issue of whether the turf stays on Frontier Apartments. I mean, it boils down to that either.
Yeah, absolutely.
Vice Mayor, we may as well have, you know, a difference of opinion here and both of us, both of us, well, I know, I know...
That's never happened before.
I know, I, yeah, I know both of us and, yeah. And all the other members of this body have gone out and we have walked both sides. So, you know, we've seen, you know, the application at the Oriad Hotel. I believe the planning director, it was, it was very appropriate use at that site. I do, as I look at the site of Frontier Apartments, is it the best, best use? I don't know, shoot, I would have probably thrown grass seed and I would have been the one that was probably written up for not taking care of the grass. But, you know, is it something that is, does it work? I think it probably does, but I think at the same time too, I think that there's probably things that need to be written into a code somewhere that says that there's going to be a maintenance of that, of that product on that ground, easy as that. But, but I think that, are we writing it after the fact? Absolutely, I think that that is, that is, you know, kind of what we're doing, what we do in the future on this thing. You know, on the use of synthetic material. I think that that's a good looking site. I think that there were some, some things that happened on this site from the fire. You know, I lived a couple of blocks from it and I got to see a lot of the damage that was done to that earth. I mean, Lord knows, I'm no expert on it, but I think at this particular site, I think it works. I would vote not to remove it, okay?
All right, and then what's going to happen when they develop the rest of the site? The applicant said they really didn't want to mix artificial and grass turfs. Right now, they have six point six percent of their site in artificial turfs, yet it looks to me like only about half of it's been developed, somewhere along that, somewhere along that number, I don't know, because they can get it all, but there's a substantial portion that's not been developed. So, at that point, is the rest of that going to go into natural turf then?
Were we not talking about, were we not talking about the use of this being at the 10% range?
Well, you got three point four percent left you can put in then, if you approve it as an alternative landscape.
But I think that's what we talked about was 10%, so.
So, I'm just going to chime in then.
Yeah.
You know, this boils down to interpretation of, you know, an opinion of a person or developer or builder, whomever, you know, hearing what seemed acceptable in one location and applying that logic to another location correctly or incorrectly. You know, personally, I would have asked, you know, if it was me. But, you know, I over, I looked at the site before and the site as it is today. And I also have, there's even aerial photography showing that what the site soils look like when they were done with the preparation of this site. And almost every location where they've put the synthetic turf was either previously covered by concrete, asphalt, or buildings, which means all those materials were stripped off the site and what was left was probably not soil, but fill material or, you know, some sort of junk that was left over from when they, when the building burned down or when they cleared the site previously, when they first developed it. So, you know, there's one thing to start a building, put it in a green field where there's some good existing soil and try to lay down some, you know, reasonable level of turf grass. You know, I am not a fan of using this even as liberally as they have already. But in the locations, you know, the thing that put me over the edge is the old locations where there's a large spance of this material used to be driving, used to be parking lot and used to be buildings. So, for me, it wasn't like we started this site and decided, oh, let's just use grass because it's cheaper or it's easier. I think it was a reasonable solution to one of the characteristics, which is already in the code, which is soil type or soil. And in my book, this wasn't soil, this was garbage. And there's a picture of the site, it doesn't look brown, it looks white and it looks scarred and it looks like an area that wouldn't support very much vegetation in my book, without bringing in tons of topsoil and starting again. So, whether or not that's an excuse or not, I believe if I was in somebody's shoes, you know, that I would, you know, I would seek and request approval ahead of time, you know, and that didn't happen. But, you know, in my justification, you know, Bob, and, you know, for me, I see it as a similar situation where you're left with a building on an area that was covered in concrete for thirty-five years. And so, the soil was dead and whatever was there wasn't soil. So, I don't think we're doing any harm to the environment per se by allowing what's there to stay. But I do think that, you know, it's, it's, you know, people say it's easier to ask forgiveness than to ask permission and that's the kind of philosophy we need to change in our community if that's truly the case, whether it's here or anywhere else. I hear that, you know, in lots of different locations and in this case, you know, they're asking for forgiveness. And, you know, in some situations, I probably would never agree to something like this. But in this location, with the history of this site and what was left behind after they graded and redeveloped the site, I think it might be a reasonable conclusion or request with the existing code for alternate compliance. Because if Scott used topography and soil and traffic as a reason to approve it historically, then maybe that was what the developer was thinking, I have no idea. But, you know, for me, that's kind of what it boiled down to. And so, I think it's reasonable to consider practical or impractical growth of grass. And if we were going to allow them to put down impervious materials or rocks or some other, other material, he probably should have, you know, sought permission ahead of time. But in this instance, you know, I believe that it looks okay, that it's not something I want to see in multiple locations throughout the community. But I do think there's a reasonable use of this material in certain locations. And, you know, I think asking them to remove it is far more environmentally impactful than to let it stay and to have some decent rules in place to allow its use on a limited basis. And I think I said that last time. But, you know, I think tearing up all this material and throwing it in a landfill seems to me like a waste of resources and time and energy. And for me, if this is about the environment, if this is about resource conservation and this is about trying to be good environmental stewards, then that's not the solution for me. So, I mean, all giving, all things considered, those are, that's how I came to the conclusion. I think we should just let it, let it lie and come up with some good rules to prohibit this type of thing from happening in the future.
I, I agree.
Sorry, I talked too much.
No, that's, I dislike the idea of us having artificial turf all over town. I just, I don't think it's a good practice. I do see, I mean, I see the Oriad, it was a great application for it. And I do see some confusion with an allowance of it at the Oriad and then this next project comes along and let's go ahead and use it here and it just happened. Well, it's, it's here, then we did have, you know, the site wasn't, wasn't the most ideal for growing, the growing conditions weren't any, weren't any good here anyway. I, you know, I dislike the turf, but not enough to, I think, warrant pulling it off of this particular site that it's already in. And I do believe that there was, again, I think there was some legitimate confusion. And that's, it's more of a, I think you have to at least give the benefit of the doubt on that, in that regard. And realize that that's not, you know, there may be been a little bit of a vast forgiveness with a touch of confusion thrown in and you mix it all together and there you go. But we are where we are here and I think as far as I'm concerned going forward, we could, we can leave it in this site for now and see how it, how it looks in the future. But we need to, we need to have some tight controls over the, over the use of turf because I'm, I'm not really thrilled about having even this much artificial turf on another project. When we look at these other, you know, these other potential projects and do I want to see it, you know, being ripped up at another, grass, real grass being ripped up at another site and turf being put down? No, I don't think so. I think it's, this is, the use of this product would be for the situations like we had at the Oriad, where you had a steep slope, you've got a high traffic area, just nothing's going to grow there. It's just, okay, here we have another option besides the other sort of zero escaping sort of situation. There's, there's another tool for us to use. I just don't want it to see turf being used, artificial turf being used throughout town in place of actual living grass. You know, I don't think that's the right application. I think it's over, it was overused, in my humble opinion, you know, it was overused at this site from what I would like to see in the future. But again, I do not have feelings so strong that I would recommend going to the extra step of pulling this out. And what a waste that is at this point. I think there was some confusion, let's let this, this lie and come up with some language that's restrictive. I do, I don't really relish the idea of revisiting this though, you know, again, it's just, this was, this one's almost painful in a way. The report is huge, there's a lot of material in it, some of it's relevant, a lot of it's not. A lot of it drifts into environmental territories where, you know, two environmental consultants sitting up here looking at it, you know, can rip holes in it day and night. And that's, that's something I think, again, simplicity is great and I appreciate a comprehensive review. I do worry, you know? You know, I think that, in my opinion, we have a certain ability, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, Scott, that we have, as the rules stand today, we have a certain ability to handle special Oriad-like conditions as they arise. I mean, you felt like you were okay there, but you've also indicated tonight that maybe you went beyond what you thought was, was okay.
As we put all the words of the code under the microscope through this process, it's questionable. I feel like it was the right outcome at the Oriad Hotel. Whether or not we were completely within our scope to make that decision, I think is the question. But we did that process and it had good outcome and, but again, when we were presented with that request here, we decided that the level was too great. And I think that's where the planning commission in part fell, which was, well, they kind of appreciated the ability to do that for Oriad, but also recognized that this was a different type of project. And appreciated staff's position that we couldn't approve it for this particular project.
Okay. One of the things I worry about here is that we're, we're talking about an extensive text amendment change, lots and lots of rules laid out to make artificial turf more readily usable in town when what we're really talking about is a particular site and is that okay? And, you know, that, I feel uncomfortable making the rule that would allow this one site work applied to the entire town. I don't like that, I think it's too much.
And Mayor, there, I mean, if we can visit just for a minute, page four of Jane's letter that talks about that section twenty dash twenty twelve, that would be if, if, if the commission determines that that site is acceptable, then the code answer to that direction would be language that would speak, "All synthetic turf installed prior to the effective date of section twenty twenty eleven shall be deemed approved, but subject to the provisions of the use standards." That is the provision that accepts the tuckaway project and makes it code compliant. And then from that point forward, every other request for alternative compliance would be this limited framework of no more than 10% of the site. Now, that, there's a practical challenge there, well, what do you do with the second phase? If acceptable and you don't want to see a mixed match of grass and turf, we could install language that say, "All synthetic turf installed and planned for installation" and interpret this one project to be planned for installation of synthetic turf. That would make a code compliant site out of tuckaway apartments and everything forward would need to comply with this new language.
The, if I'm, as I'm remembering correctly, the site plan. Now, you've installed, you've done the pool and the clubhouse on the other side of the road. But barring that, there is a road that would divide the first phase from the second phase and would provide a natural sort of barrier as one goes from carpet to linoleum.
Can you put up, you had a overhead of that?
You want to go from, you know, you don't want to have a room change as you're, as you're going, changing flooring treatments? And so, that road could, could maybe provide that sort of... Just trying to offend someone else tonight.
They're bad jokes anyway.
It just offended your sense of humor.
This is, I think this is the one you asked for.
Yes.
And if you're going to go with the, with the 10%, we certainly will stay within that 10% as, as the rest of this is, is built out. I mean, that's, that's what we would suggest and we had told Mr. McCullough that. And I apologize if calling people by their first name was inappropriate. But the, the other thing is the...
Is there, Jane, sorry, sorry, I mean, counselor.
Yes, Mayor.
Is there turf on this section across the street there?
Here?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Yeah, there's some turf, is that, yeah, I thought I remembered some, something there.
Yes, here and here.
Just, okay.
Just those two spots.
Mayor, page nine of the staff report shows the site plan.
Thanks, I got a little lost in the...
And we just suggested that the, that the staff language that was used that said whatever was there was okay, but had to follow the maintenance and enforcement standards. And I think that what Scott is proposing right now is that you go back to the use standards and I understand that staff's okay with the 500 square feet rather than 100, in which case we would certainly agree with them on that in twenty, twenty eleven A two. But the, and if you adopt the 10% site, that's fine too, we would agree with those. The 100 square feet, we can't agree with and I think the staff has backed off of just because you wouldn't be able to fit all the trees and shrubs on the, on the site. Just physically wouldn't be possible. But the, Mr. McCullough's raised the issue as to whether this is really permeable, whether this really does fit all of these standards. And if we're going to approve what's there, I think it's the maintenance and the enforcement that we want to make sure goes forward and we will provide to Mr. McCullough any additional information he wants. But we, we just don't want to do anything that's going to avoid any warranties. But permeability is certainly important and we don't disagree with that.
Mayor, hopefully, based on our conversations earlier, there's no requirement to put down turf, you know?
No.
So, maybe to try and keep this all in context that obviously they'll be making accommodations to match things up properly. But, you know, whatever they use up as far as square feet goes, to try and, if we end up there, then they can use something else that's less maintenance, maybe some native landscaping that was purported, so.
Yeah.
Just, I think, I don't think you have to have that, that room separation between the flooring, so.
Yeah, it's, it's possible. There's, there's also parking lots and other things that go between there. So, we're not like budding up, there's no way that we'd be budding up artificial turf with, with grass.
Exactly.
That would be confusing as you were mowing.
Or shampooing. Or shampooing.
Scott provided one wished to allow Frontier here and not change the, the ordinance or the, I guess, lack of, of text amendment that exists. Is there, is there a way to accomplish that goal?
A way to, a way to accept Frontier, but...
Leave things as they are.
Exactly the way they are.
Because your changes are within a text amendment that wouldn't exist in that case.
Right. I hate to say it, but I think we would want to study that, that issue a little bit.
Why don't we just do a straw vote tonight to get it off the table and then let them come back with the right language or some kind of...
If it's prudent.
Straw turf, whatever. Straw vote. An artificial, artificial straw.
Synthetic, well.
Yeah.
Because we haven't, we haven't had that kind of direction, so we haven't actually given that...
Okay.
...a lot of thought. I think that's something we want to, to look at and may, they want a code compliant site.
Sure.
And we want it to be code compliant and we, we also, there's an element of wanting to clarify any confusion that appears to exist in the community about whether or not this is a compliant landscape material.
Could the motion not be to approve Frontier with not more than 10% artificial turf on that site?
Director Ordinance's court.
The, may I, Mayor, make one comment?
Suggestion?
One suggestion that might be helpful, that since the planning director has the administrative authority to grant alternative compliance, I think he could do that for Frontier and then grant a permanent occupancy permit. And I don't know why that administrative order could not be compliant with the 10%. No more than 10%.
We don't have that language now.
Well, right now, the code allows administrative decision for alternative compliance. And I think that should the planning director find after further study that that would be appropriate, that could happen with a condition. There's nothing that prevents the condition for alternative compliance.
If, if your direction, Vice Mayor Shum, is to, is to have us analyze that, we'd be happy to do that and bring back, present you with some language to do that.
I'm trying to get to a point where we can have a final vote on this one particular issue tonight and not have it come back to bite us in any way. And then whatever else we decide to do with all this text information to try and codify that some way that we're all happy with.
Well, and that is, that is the challenge and, and that is why we have gone through this exercise, because to, to date, we are, we are not able to say that it's code compliant through alternative compliance. Just some of the language that Mary presented in the very first few slides with the prohibition of synthetic materials prevents us in good faith from, from making that determination. Now, could we make that determination and have it appeal to the Commission, BZA? In fact, that would be the avenue. But, I mean, I think we're here to, to get your direction on how to, how to pursue this and then present you with some, some good code language.
That's all right. I was just going to say to that, well, the language, section 20 dash 2012, even though currently synthetic's not addressed in there as compliant, I mean, that, that would cover this decision for this property, no? And then, and then that's out of the way.
Sorry, can you...
20 dash 2012, it says, "All synthetic turf, turf installed prior to the effective date," you know?
That, that...
Just change that border a little, effective.
That could be part of any code amendment. Right. And I think there are two issues, whether or not you want to see Frontier in its present form or even its built-out form with synthetic turf, that's one issue and we can build a code that accepts that. And then, do you want to move ahead with this amendment in some form that allows other properties citywide to have limited use of synthetic turf, up to 10% of this total site area?
Well, my only concern on that is the up to 10%. Because when we talked about, you know, tuckaway, you get up to the, up to 10%, it's compliant. You know what I mean? Which makes it, you then look at how much this could spread and how many places this could, could be done. That's, I don't think what we were looking to do. And that's why separating the two makes sense to me, is just say, whatever you need to say in here, to say that, that that in fact is grandfathered in, however. We still could, can address synthetic turf and, and limit it, I wouldn't say to 10% of the whole site plan though, because you, that's going to qualify. I mean, you know, I think it dramatically changes this. That's why I think it's right to get, get to this particular property out of the way. And then look at situations like the Oriad where we know it really made sense and you made the right call in doing that, to where you're not having to make that call or be in that position. We, we can put that language in.
Can, are you saying that the decision you made at Oriad was, was...
Beyond his...
Beyond your, are you saying that that, that could be appealed to the BZA right now?
It could have at the time that the decision was made.
The period's run.
Right. There's a nine or 10-day period where...
Okay.
...that could be appealed. That's, that's done.
And the way, the reason that this doesn't fall under that is because you only gave him a temporary occupancy permit?
No, the reason that, I mean, we felt justified in Oriad because it was very limited and their landscaping materials otherwise complied with the code and it was seen more as a, as a border to the landscaping, not, not a use of landscape materials to the level and scope that Frontier has been used by, that have been used at. So when presented with the issue at Frontier, we studied the code and we said, "We can't do alternative compliance here. The sheer amount of synthetic turf exceeds what we interpret the code to allow."
So you thought it allowed it at Oriad, even though you just said the language specifically disallows it, you have the authority to override the language that exists prohibiting synthetic materials, period? So make sure I understand that.
Right.
You deemed it acceptable as an alternate form of compliance. However, you won't deem it acceptable as an alternate form of compliance because it's specifically excluded as, because it's synthetic or artificial? So which one is it? Is it the size? Because I heard both things. I want to make sure that we, if we're writing this, I, I mean, I'm hearing two conflicting reasons on why we want to deny this.
Right. In hindsight, our, our pretty liberal interpretation of the code for the Oriad, when put to this type of project and the degree that it's, that it's being requested for use, was likely the wrong way to interpret the code. So as we've gone through this process, our opinion of how the process works has changed, what authority we have to accept synthetic turf. When, when we, when we review the code line for line and word for word, it's questionable whether we had the authority in Oriad to accept that. We did it. We, this is, this is kind of the evolution of how we interpret the codes, though. We need to go on kind of case by case.
Sure.
And so when presented with Frontier and the, and the degree of its use and another review of the code, we interpreted that we could not accept, we could not accept it as alternative compliance in that regard.
Okay. I, I totally get where you're at and I am just trying to, you know, come up with a way to say this without opening it up to an, an issue on interpretation and putting it on us, I guess. I guess that's what we're doing.
Yeah.
I want to make a suggestion. That is that you authorize us to draft a very simple ordinance that would then come back to you for approval. And if it's of a sufficient quantity of commissioners interested in it, we can put it on the consent agenda. That ordinance would say, "All synthetic turf installed prior to the effective date of this ordinance shall be deemed approved, provided that it is maintained and replaced as needed to comply with the approved landscaped plan." That way, it makes it very clear that they've got to maintain and approve it accordingly. And then all future installations of synthetic turf in a site plan shall be approved as part of a city commission decision. I don't see a lot of them coming forward in the future. I think we're learning about this. You all, then we'll be able to see how it progresses and, and we can proceed. That gets at the issue of, which I understand from counting commissioners, that, that the location off of Frontier is, is essentially grandfathered in. It also provides some language about maintenance. It also then basically moves this issue on to another day when we would see additional requests. I would expect that when we would get an additional request, we would go back and we'd be looking at this issue, about the size of its use, about whether or not it's impervious or not, all those other issues as well. We're not solving this issue for all times, but we are making that decision and we're also putting something in the code that reflects that. I, I think, I understand Scott's reluctance about saying, "Well, I want it..." It's a little bit unfortunate to have the commission say, "Well, administratively approve this," when what we really need is to have it codified, I think. So that, that's my suggestion, trying to, as I, and again, it's obviously subject to any amendments as such.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any language in there about how often we want to see it and where and when and, I mean, again, I don't, I don't want this to grow too far, but it'd be nice to, to present a message to the, you know, saying that this isn't what we're wanting to see on a, you know, this is on a special occasion.
Well, we could maybe put in something along, put in something along those lines that synthetic turf would only be allowed in limited special circumstances and with the approval of the city commission.
Case-by-case basis.
Case-by-case, so that if we do get an application coming in saying, "Well, I'm going to do it in a lot of large situations," we're going to go ahead and forecast to them, it's not likely to get approved.
Right.
Or we can go into the rest of the, the code amendments and try and work out the percentages and other items as well. Just try to offer a suggestion.
I like it's applications come here.
Yeah. Well, if it, in the event that it gets too, you know, onerous, that, that could be changed. But if there is language in there that says, "Hey, we really don't want to see it too often," then that'll help stem that flood, but I don't think there'll be a flood.
Under city manager's recommendation, what, what does that do for the undeveloped part of the site with regards to continuing with additional usage of that particular product?
Well, in my, in my opinion, it should come back to the city commission. You all will decide that.
That's, that's what I would think.
So what's there is there. Anything else is another, another day to decide.
And hopefully rare.
I think we can, we can say that.
Sounds good to me.
Sold.
Sold.
All the feedback we're getting is we don't want it to just all of a sudden creep in and go to places and I think the 10% is maybe inappropriate.
Mm-hmm.
Again, it's not, you know, it's reasonable application. So let's forget numbers, let's, because those can come back and bite us and let's talk about reasonable review of it as necessary and leave it at that. And this, this, this is included because it would be, hasn't been developed and the site plan's been approved though already, hasn't it?
The site, right, not...
The whole site, site plan.
The whole site plan for...
The whole site plan has been approved.
Right, site plan's been approved.
Ownership permit, there's nothing...
But I mean, the phase two...
Phase two, yeah.
Has already been approved.
Yes.
The landscaping there of, has been approved.
Right.
Just might have actual grass inserted instead of...
It's, it's been approved with code compliant materials with sod and turf, yes.
Good.
Yeah, we'll see.
How's that? And then we could see that on a, potentially on consent.
You said the agenda, so that's more...
Okay. So that we don't have to talk about it all over again. Because I think we're, I think we've done that and we've done our, our duty on, as far as that goes, twice now. And I think we're, I think we're there, so.
We need to motion.
Jonathan has been, Bill, most of the day has gone home, so we're going to do a good job writing the motion, Mayor.
We need to have motion to direct staff to prepare an ordinance as outlined by the city manager. Be placed on the next agenda. Is that right?
That sounds, that sounds good.
Second.
What, what you read?
Yeah.
With an additional proviso about stuff that will be expected to be limited...
Right.
Circumstances.
Handful approved by the city commission.
Absolutely true.
Any, any use thereof?
All future, all future uses will be approved by the city commission. All future uses are expected to be in limited circumstances and locations and will all be approved by the city commission.
Perfect.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion's made by Commissioner Amick, seconded by Commissioner Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Right.
Motion passes 4-1. Vice Mayor Shum in dissension. Very good.
Can we, excuse me, can we make sure we talk about residential at some point in time, that you get all that figured out, too? Because that, that's going to be the, the new wave.
Yeah, true.
We didn't ever even go there, but...
No. Very good. Public comment of a general nature.
Hello again. You can call me Madam President. Let's just clear that up right now, just so you know. Um, the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association would like the city commission to initiate a district study of the borders of downtown, that's Vermont, New Hampshire, so we can take a clear look at it as a whole, not piecemeal. We don't want to fight the same battle down the street. So if you guys could please talk about that, I'd appreciate it. I understand that Oriad, of course, will take like a year or so, I guess, I don't know. So if anything, we want to get on a waiting list. We'll be at the door. Thank you.
Thank you.
Town Peterson, 923 Rhode Island Street. A second to what Leslie just said. Please consider that from 11th Street to the river, along the entire New Hampshire street corridor, you have huge amounts of open space, huge amounts of parking lots, which are, I consider them future development in cold storage. You have six, by my count, six major existing structures that represent significant retail opportunities. This is, this is a significant opportunity for growth, serious economic growth of Lawrence, but we need to do it smart. Need to do it thought out. Just building more space, be it retail, be it restaurants, be it hotels, doesn't do it. We need to do this development intelligently. And so what East Lawrence Neighborhood Association is requesting is exactly that. I'll take what Leslie said and raise it one. Right now or very soon, you will have before you a proposal. I'm guessing, this is my forecast, that it'll be before you, where you're asked to overturn a decision of the Historic Resources Commission. You know what I'm talking about. It's the Ninth and New Hampshire Hotel. And what I would suggest to you, I'm, I'm quite convinced that there are feasible and prudent alternatives. And those are best explored and they're best developed in the context of this district study. So thinking forward, again, this is just an additional comment, but thinking forward over the next few weeks or months, when this thing comes before you, I would appeal to you to think in the long term and think in the region. And let's not do this project by project and in a big hurry. Let's think about very clearly the whole district, this huge opportunity that Lawrence has sitting in front of it. And let's do this the smart way. So my addition to what Leslie just asked you is, please, when the 900 hotel project comes in front of you, please consider that there are alternatives and so that you should vote... there are alternatives, and so that you should vote no. Not no to development, but no so that we have some time to develop this study and explore for the good of Lawrence, not for the short-term benefit of some, for the good of Lawrence, what is the best plan of development?
At this time, gentlemen, would it be appropriate for me to make further remarks on the matter of synthetic turf? I bring this up because of the time the applicant has taken on this subject, and I think that those with differing views should have additional time to speak.
At this time, we're open to public, to any and all public comments, so...
Okay. My name is Dan Danenberg at 2702 University Drive. One of the things that comes up is, where is artificial turf manufactured? Do we have a plant here in Lawrence that employs Lawrence citizens that manufactures artificial surfaces or synthetic turf? We have companies in this town who install natural plantings and natural turf. I think we used to have turf farms. I don't know whether we still do or not, but that would provide stimulus for the local economy. Where is this synthetic turf made? I don't know. By whom? What good is it if we're sending money to someplace outside of Lawrence to buy this product when we could be spending money here in Lawrence for the natural products and natural growth? The other thing that concerns me is that the applicant's representative, I believe it's Ms. Eldridge, had three sidebar conversations whispered with Mr. McCullough. We don't know, in the room, the rest of us, what those comments were about. I think that is very inappropriate to use that form and that means of extending the presentation time without having the rest of us informed about what was said. And that brings to mind a final thought, a question. Do the staff of the Planning and Development Department keep a log or logs of the times and dates when they meet with applicant representatives? And a short, brief note on what was discussed? I assume those meetings happen. I don't know. I could be in error. But there's nobody else in the room, I assume, when that happens. There's no one representing the citizens of the community. Final point, the use of the term reasonable in limiting synthetic turf use, that is the most egregious guideline to use. Reasonable covers a gamut of possibilities. And I hope any ordinance that is ultimately adopted by this body can, has a firm and fixed number that will apply, a low, firm and fixed number, i.e. 0 percent on synthetic turf. Thank you.
Further public comment?
I'm sorry. I know you discussed it just a little bit, but I wasn't sure exactly what the body felt about the issue of the residential, because it is already happening. And I know neighborhoods would, you know, we've had a lot of conversation in land, and I've got a running email log with several neighborhoods right now. And we would appreciate if there were something that gave us protections, even if it's some kind of percentage, because right now, I'm told we have nothing. So I really hope that you'll listen to Commissioner Dever and consider it.
Thank you. Question for staff. We currently have no restrictions. I mean, what would the, what would a mechanism look like to restrict?
Well, we have proper maintenance codes, but nothing that speaks directly to the use of synthetic turf in residential application. So we have codes that speak to its, you know, appearance, if it were to be worn, tattered, torn. We have weed ordinances and things. We don't have anything that speaks to it or against it currently.
Nor to what I might put in my yard right now. I mean, I could, could I cover my front yard in pea gravel?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean it.
Yes.
Then I wouldn't have to put that sprinkler system I'm doing right now. Should've thought of that. So in order to provide some sort of restriction, we could draft, an ordinance could be drafted, which would specifically prevent that, the application in...
Right. In my opinion, we would have to codify it. If we wanted to prohibit it as a material, we would have to put in the code, whether it's development code or some other part of the city code.
Okay.
I guess we put that on the agenda.
Yeah, I think we can, I think we can manage that. The only other, the other option, you know, would be, I suppose, to add it to...
Add it to what we just talked about.
To what we just did. That would be a quick and easy solution to that, and just may follow the same mechanisms for approval. And the same, if it was done before, that it's okay. If it's done in the future, it comes here. We don't want to see it too much. Dave, how does that?
So I did.
Is that a possibility?
Add it to this ordinance that you've authorized us to draft, as far as we're concerned. So, so we're, so we're grandfathering it?
Yes, sure. So...
I'll just...
Yes, sir.
Very good.
I'll add that to mine.
I think we're, I think we're probably there, and we'll see it again. We'll see it when it comes back and deal with it. I think that that would prevent another round. Useful. For further public comment of a general nature this evening. Then we'll move on to future agenda items. Dave?
We've got some items there for the 21st. Next Tuesday is Valentine's Day.
Are we, it'd be nice to have a short meeting, I think. Or, do we have anything on the agenda?
Well, we're gonna do a number of consent agenda items. We've worked hard, had a good meeting with Wilson Estes this morning on the police feasibility study contract. I would recommend, Mayor, that'd be on a consent agenda item. That's how we've proceeded with those types of contracts. We've also got contracts with Gould Evans and Jeffrey Byrne related to the West Side Recreation Center feasibility study and fundraising.
Right.
Contracts as well. Those will be in place for next week. I don't recall of any other items that will be coming on the 14th, but if your direction is to keep it thin, we know how to do that.
I've got a great idea. Why don't we meet at 5:00?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was gonna ask if that would be...
Think of the Lonely Hearts that'll be out there.
Yeah, I might be, I might be just this much more popular. Every bit helps.
I won't.
I'm good.
No.
I'll, do we need a motion on that? No, no, just move.
If that, unless there's conflicts, your direction is to have the meeting on the 14th at 5:00 and to keep it thin.
Is that the right time? I mean, is it, and if it's a thin...
We try and work till 5:00 around here, so we're here. But...
You won't have to come back.
Okay.
It'll be fine.
Let's, let's make...
I mean, we have meetings when you tell us, so...
Well, I'd move that we have next Tuesday's meeting starting at 5:00.
Second.
If you're...
Motion's made by Vice Mayor Shum, seconded by Commissioner Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. Five-zero. We'll be here at 5:00 next week instead.
We'll all be here. And we understand the direction is to keep it thin. I don't know of any items that we've scheduled for public hearings or any of those things and where...
That would be, that would be a bad day for anyone to, you know, to have to, have them expect to participate in their municipal government. So, very good. Great. Anything else on future agenda?
Don't believe so. We did add the item there for the 21st.
Dave, well, I apologize for interrupting. I'm thinking Aspen Heights may have been, we may have been trying to schedule that for the 14th. It's got one regular agenda item in the plat that didn't gain an...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, from what I've understood about those issues, I don't know that there would be...
No, that's fine.
Concern about having it at 5:00, as long as we've put it on the agenda.
Right.
We haven't published, haven't published a public hearing required by statute.
There's no public hearing, no.
The, you know, so if we can keep it thin, that's great. If it doesn't, you know, if it doesn't work, we, we're here to serve, but we'd like it to... Commission...
Direction received.
Commission items? Calendar?
Mayor, we...
Oh, task force, Solid Waste Task Force. Would Tuesday, February 28th, 4:30 to 6:00 work for a study session, preceding the meeting to receive the Solid Waste Task Force report and discuss what's in it, what we're doing, and...
Would you say 4:00 or 4:30?
4:30 on the 28th of February. Good? Make that happen. Very good. Anything else on calendar?